Will Westport's 2019 Annual Town Meeting please come to order? And would all please rise and join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance.
...... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as well.
Thank you and welcome. Here's what we're going to do tonight. We're going to go through a few preliminaries. We're going to have a brief presentation from the Finance Committee. And then we will act on all the articles in the town meeting warrant, which I hope you have a copy of before you. So, what are we doing here? You are the small group of Westport's some 11,500 registered voters who have agreed to accept your power and I might say responsibility to act as legislators for your town. So, we're going to decide on all the articles before us in the town meeting warrant. To explain a few things, my name is -- are you having hard to -- Better?
Yes.
Good. Okay. My name is Stephen Forrest. I'm the moderator. I chair the meeting and I decide questions of order. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to explain how the meeting works. Many of you have been here a lot of times. Some of you don't know how it works because you have not been here before. Town meeting is a gathering of the willing registered voters of the town as a legislature to act upon the matters set out in the warrant. The warrant is a list prepared by the Board of Selectmen of matters we will act upon in this meeting. We will act on every item in the warrant. We will not act on anything that is not in the warrant. The individual items on the warrant are called warrant articles. An article poses a question to the town that has one or more possible answers. I will read or summarize an article. I will then ask for a motion. A motion is a proposed specific answer to that question. Most of the motions that you're going to see tonight have been arranged in advance to make sure that they are in proper legalese. And they'll be a little bit different for those of you who've been here before. We're actually going to have the motions up on slides in yellow. So, when you see yellow, you're looking at a motion. When you see white print, you're looking at the text of a warrant article. We'll then follow the tradition of asking for a second so that at least we know that two people here are in favor of it. We then get a recommendation from the Finance Committee. That's followed by discussion where -- in which we may decide that we want to change the answer to the question that the warrant article asks. And so, one of the things that we may want to do is make -- is amend that motion. We'll talk about amendments a little bit more further on. We operate under a set of rules that we will be enforced politely, I hope, but firmly. The purpose of our rules is to allow us to complete our business in an efficient orderly way, identifying and acting on the will of the majority while respecting the minority and always showing appropriate respect for our neighbors. And while the rules are several, they can be summed up in four simple concepts. We're polite. We deal with one thing at a time. No one gets an unfair advantage. And we move it along as fast as we can without sacrificing one through three. Our rules come from a few different sources. Our bylaws lay out a few of the rules of town meeting. And one of the things that they lay out is they say that our meeting will be conducted in accordance with a book called Town Meeting Time. We also have things that we simply do by tradition. And then also the moderator's judgment. When we come to discussing the questions before us, I'm going to ask you to please wait to be recognized or given the floor. Please begin by stating your name. Please speak only to the question before us at the time. And no personal speech. This takes a little practice. And I will interrupt you if you refer to another person by name. The artful person says "the previous speaker" when they want to refer to something that someone else said. And we're doing something a little bit different for speaking now too because I've stood up here and seen at times lines eight people long at a microphone waiting to speak with someone who's obviously in distress, having to stand as long as they have to stand in order to be able to speak. So, by both of the microphones, there are three chairs marked "reserved." Those are reserved for anyone who needs to sit while they're waiting in line to speak. And I'm just going to ask the people in line to take care of ordering yourselves properly. So, if you know that someone sitting was next in front of you, please, when their time comes, say "it's your turn" and let them speak. Continue with how we carry on our discussion route. Disrespectful speech can certainly not be tolerated. While anyone can speak as many times as they like on any question, no one gets to speak for a second time until everyone who wants to speak for the first time has had a chance. We impose a five-minute time limit on speech from the floor. And trust me, that is already too long. By minute four, no one remembers what you said in minute one. The best town meeting speeches, people say what they're going to say, they say it, and then they say what they just said in about 90 seconds. We do have a 10-minute time limit for pre-arranged presentations on complex topics that have to be supported by visual aids so we can keep track of what they're saying. We will have a couple of those tonight. Back to the issue of amendments. Again, if you would like to propose a change to the answer to the question that we are discussing, if the amendment is very simple, if it simply changes a word, or a number, or something that we can all easily understand verbally, you can simply speak it to a microphone. If it's more complex than that, I'm going to ask you to please come up here, whisper to me, and offer to me in writing. And as we're trying to come to our wise decisions about the questions before us, we're going to need to gather information. And you may find that you want to ask a question of any one of the many people here who may have information about a topic that you don't have access to. Town council, the Board of Selectmen, our town administrator, the Finance Committee. We have kind of an awkward, hard-to-get-used procedure for doing that, but there's a good reason for that procedure to be in place. If you need to ask a question, if you wanted to ask a question of town council, you would say to me, "Mr. Moderator, through you, I have a question for town council." I would say to you, "What is your question?" You would say, "What day is it?" And I would say, "Mr. Jenkins, would you be kind enough to tell us what day it is?" He would say that it's Tuesday. I would go back and say, "It's Tuesday." Does that adequately answer your question? And the reason for that is to avoid shouting back and forth between individuals. It's not that hard once you get used to it. But one other small thing with questions, when people do volunteer to answer questions, we allow five minutes for everyone until everyone has had a chance to speak for their first time. If you're answering a question, if you're kind enough to offer some answer to a question, I would ask you to please just answer the question. Because if you editorialize, then you're kind of taking time that really isn't fair when everyone else is restricted to five minutes. So, very, very often, the answer to a question is yes or no. There are two circumstances in which you can stand up and interrupt the person that's speaking, including me. One is a point of order. And that is if you think that I am conducting the meeting incorrectly. If I've made a mistake, violated a rule of the meeting, or so on. If that happens, and it has happened before, and it will happen again, please stand up and either from your seat or go to a microphone and say, "Mr. Moderator, I rise to a point of order. I will ask you what your point of order is. If I agree that a mistake has been made, it will be corrected. If not, we will continue as we were." The other, you guys demonstrated a good example of a point of privilege earlier when you couldn't hear me. A point of privilege is anything that interferes with your ability to participate in the meeting effectively. If people around you are talking, you can't hear. If the microphone is not loud enough, if a speaker can't speak, that would be a point of privilege. "Mr. Moderator, I rise to a point of privilege. I cannot hear," whatever, and we will correct that so that you can participate fully in the meeting. And if you have a procedure question and don't know what's going on, just ask. This is your meeting. The rules are here to help us do this in an efficient way, not to intimidate or make life difficult for anybody. We are in just a minute going to get a presentation from the Finance Committee, but I first want to recognize the members of the Finance Committee and ask you to join me in giving them a round of applause for all the hard work they do to prepare us for this meeting. The Chairman, Gary Carrero; the Vice Chairman, Karen Rouse; Charles Buzzey Baron; Tom Schmidt; Hugh Morton; Bob McCarthy; Karen Powell; Tracy Preisner; and Kevin Rio. Thank you all very much. And now, Finance Committee Chairperson Gary Carrero will give us a short presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to the residents that are here, allowing me the opportunity to briefly introduce key highlights in the fiscal year 20 budget. My name is Gary Carrero, and I'm Chair of the Finance Committee. Over the past several months, the Finance Committee has worked to move forward unanimously approve and recommend the town meeting of $40,971,470 fiscal year 20 operating budget. Following are the most significant key highlights within the fiscal year 20 budget. This year's budget can be summarized in the following areas. Level service. Once again, level services have been maintained throughout the budget process across many key areas such as public safety, police and fire, the town's highway departments, which in essence means that the same level of services that were provided in FY '19 will continue to take place in FY '20. The committee was also able to meet the school budget request submitted by the Superintendent and School Committee. And we would just like to thank those individuals for working with us throughout the budget process. Audit Committee. Establishment of the Audit Committee. The town of Westport is asking town meeting tonight to approve Article 19. Creation of an Audit Committee. Our outside auditors, Roselli and Clark, have included this in past management letters to the town as a best practice to oversee financial operations and to ensure the timeliness and properly met, which set forth by the Mass Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services. Town Positions. FY '20 budget includes funding for four town positions, an assistant town planner, building clerk, and two positions in the Board of Health. FY '20 budget also includes $75,000 as a safe gap measure to continue consulting work within the Treasurer's Office if need be. The Finance Committee, along with the Board of Selectmen, have been closely monitoring the progress within the Treasurer's Office, and we feel that if these funds are needed in the near future, the administration would not have to go out to a special town meeting, as was done in last year, to seek funding and potentially delaying the process. The $75,000 is being funded from free cash. And again, this year's fiscal year operating budget has minimal amount of free cash being used for one-time expenses such as capital items. After many months of deliberation, it is clear to the committee that there are still financial challenges that need to be addressed. The town has begun the process of analyzing operations through a multi-year budget analysis, which would allow for the projection of expenses and limited revenues that town can obtain. The committee also realizes that the critical need for public safety, both fire and police departments are staffed at a complement that is far below other comparable communities such as Westport and have been for nearly a decade. It's time that we prioritize the funding of these two departments for the safety and well-being of all Westport residents. The town meeting will consider the important balance of all these needs and their costs. The combination of those two items continues to be a major factor and challenge in fulfilling current and future critical operational needs and services for the town.
Thank you for your patience. I hope that's the last time I have to check all my pockets for the readers, but it may not be. So, we're going to do a couple of procedural motions just to help us kind of flex our voting muscles and deal with a couple minor issues. I'm going to ask for a motion that this meeting dispense with the reading of the warrant and that the constables return the service of that warrant and that the moderator not be required to read articles verbatim but may refer to them by number and subject matter. Have a motion, is there a second? A motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Next, we will face a couple of questions tonight that require a two-thirds majority to pass. And absent the motion that I'm going to ask for in a minute, I would have to -- we would have to take the time to count to determine the two-thirds, even if it's very obviously two-thirds. So, I'm going to ask for a motion that if a two-thirds vote is required by statute, the moderator be authorized to declare a two-thirds vote in the same manner as the majority vote is declared, provided however, that if a vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, the moderator shall verify it by taking a count. Have a motion, is there a second? Motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So, we begin the warrant. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds such sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal years and/or take any interaction relative thereto. This is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero, will we offer some motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate for free cash the sum of $19,204.91 to pay the outstanding bills from prior fiscal years listed in the warrant under Article 1.
I have a motion, a second. May I have the Finance Committee recommendation?
The recommended in favor unanimously nine to zero with the funding source from free cash.
Thank you. This is the first of several questions that we will answer that have multiple line items. So, I want to explain the procedure that we use for this. Maybe I'll jump ahead to let you see. These are the things that we're going to decide on. So, the way we're going to do it, I'm going to read each of those line items one at a time. If you would agree with that line item and you would vote yes, excuse me, and you would vote yes on that, please remain silent. If you would vote no to that line item, or if you would like to discuss it, please say "hold" loudly enough for me to hear you. When I've read all the line items, we will vote those that do not have a hold, so they are disposed of. Then we will turn to the items with a hold, discuss, and vote them individually. So, KTR Maintenance and Supply, LLC, $499.20. Smith, Solak &amp; Safe, $757.65. South Coast Health System, $500. Direct Energy, $3,518.91. KP Law, $13,929.15. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of all line items is read, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article 4 of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting by transferring from available funds and/or various line items within the current appropriations such sums of money necessary to supplement the budgets of various departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2000 -- that should say 2019, I apologize -- and/or take any other action relative -- I'm sorry, 2018 -- and/or take any other action relative thereto. I hope I didn't confuse anyone. The 2018 on the slide is correct. Mr. Carrero, will we offer some motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town amend the vote taken under Article 4 of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting by making the transfers between line items of the FY '20-18 budget listed in the warrant, in Article 2.
I have a motion, a second. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance recommends in favor unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you. And once again, we have multiple line items. We will do the same procedure. If you would disagree with or like to discuss any of these line items, say "hold" loudly enough for me to hear. If you agree, please remain silent. From health insurance to veterans' expenses, $30,000. From health insurance to town hall expenses, $5,000. From health insurance to town hall personnel services overtime, $300. From health insurance to Board of Appeals expenses, $1,000. From health insurance to cemetery personnel services, $8,300. From health insurance to building department personnel services, $150. From health insurance to Board of Health Personnel Services, $6,000.
Hold.
From health insurance to legal expenses, $10,000. From town accountant to town accountant personnel services, $1,150. From Article 5, 5718 ATM Board of Health Personnel Services, $3,000 --
Hold.
-- to Board of Health Personnel Services, $3,000.
Hold, please.
Article 5 of the May 7th, 2018 ATM to Board of Health expenses, $7,600.
Hold.
From Article 5 of the May 7th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting to Transfer Station Personal Expenses, $500.
Hold.
From Article 5 of the May 7th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting to Transfer Station Expenses, $8,143.
Hold.
Thank you. So, am I correct that we had holds on $6,000 from health insurance to Board of Health? Then the $3,000, $7,600, $581.43, those were the ones that were held?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So, seeing some of this, no discussion on the remaining line items, we will vote, all those in favor of the line items that do not have a hold, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So, now we return to health insurance to Board of Health Personnel Services, $6,000.
Zero.
Mr. Carrero, would you like to propose an amendment to that?
We amend -- we propose zero.
So, you would propose to amend that, the $6,000 to zero?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Yes.
So, we have a motion, a second, to amend the $6,000 figure to zero. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. So, now Article 5, 5718 -- well, I'm sorry. So, is there any further discussion on the, on what is now the question of making a no transfer from health insurance to Board of Health Personnel Services? Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry. Chris Wiley, Ford Road. I don't understand why.
Oh, well, will you speak into the microphone, please?
I apologize. Chris Wiley. Could I ask through you, Mr. Moderator?
Again, more directly into the microphone if you can. Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I sound like a phone company. Chris Wiley, could I ask through you, Mr. Moderator, to ask the Finance Committee why? I don't understand this.
Certainly. Mr. Carrero, can you answer that forth, please?
I defer that to the Board of Health. A member of the Board of Health.
Is there a member of the Board of Health that can offer us an answer to that question?
Phil Weinberg, Chair of the Board of Health. It's my understanding that all those items that are identified are --
We're only talking right now about $6,000 from health insurance to Board of Health Personnel Services.
Right. We don't need those additional funds. We are able to fund those expenses out of our existing budget.
So, the answer is you don't need those funds?
We don't need those funds.
Okay.
That's why it's recommended to zero it out.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion of amending, of making no transfer from health insurance to Board of Health Personnel Services? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So, from Article 5 of last year's Annual Town Meeting to Board of Health Personnel Services, $3,000.
The proposed amendment to --
So, you would offer amendment to?
Zero.
So, we have a motion to amend the $3,000 figure to zero. Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimously amended that to zero. Really don't need to take a vote after that. Article 5 of the, of the May 7th, 2018 ATM to Board of Health expenses, $7,600.
I'd like to propose an amendment, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
$6,593.
Is there a second? So, I have a motion, a second, to amend the $7,600 figure to $6,593. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. We will now vote on the $6,593 figure. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So, that figure, $6,593. We now move to Article 5 of the May 7th, 2018 ATM to Transfer Station Personal Services for $500.
I'd like to propose an amendment, Mr. Moderator, to make that zero.
We have a motion to amend that figure to zero. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article 5 of the 5718 ATM to Transfer Station Expenses, $8,143.
I'd like to propose an amendment, Mr. Moderator, to make that zero.
We have a motion to amend that figure to zero. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article 3, see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected town officers for fiscal year 2019 and/or take any action relative thereto, sponsored by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero, will you offer some motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the salaries of the elected town officials for fiscal year 2020 in the amounts printed in the warrant under Article 3.
I have a motion, a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
The Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously nine to zero.
Thank you. So, once again, we have a multiple line item article. Please say "hold" loudly enough for me to hear if you would like to discuss or amend any of these numbers. Moderator, 847. Selectmen Chairman, 6,849. Board Members, 26,935. Assessors Board Members, 18,401. Board of Health Members, 9,576. Tax Collector, 68,979. Town Clerk, 68,979. So, seeing no discussion on the, on the line items other than the treasurer, all those in favor of all line items except the treasurer, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those are carried unanimously. Would someone like to speak to the 68,979 for the treasurer? Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, I rise as a town meeting member. One of our responsibilities is to set salaries for elected officials. I'm surprised to see that both the Finance Committee on a nine-to-zero vote and the Selectmen voted to set the salary for the treasurer at the same rate as a tax collector and the clerk. In other years, we do that because of the job that the people are doing, and it's an evaluation, and our town meeting can weigh in on that. But routinely, we go along with that. Occasionally, though, we don't. And the reason we don't, because of the evaluations of some of those elected officials. I'm not here to cast any dispersions on the treasurer, the elected official, but I am here to support the Finance Committee and the Selectmen, who for the last three or four years now have been really citing deficiencies in the Treasurer's Office. And the cost of the town associated with that, I've heard figures of a quarter million dollars just this year that we might have lost in interest in doing the job properly. So, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Moderator, that we reduce that to $30,000.
We have a motion, a second, to amend the treasurer's salary from 68,979 to $30,000. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. So, we now vote on the $30,000. That was on the amendment. We are now voting on the $30,000 as, as setting that for the salary. So, all those in favor of the $30,000 salary for the treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds such sums of money considered necessary to defray the town's expenses for a 12-month period beginning July 1st, 2019, and appropriate the same to several departments and/or take any action relative thereto, sponsored by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero, will you give us a motion, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the amounts of money set forth in the printed report of the Finance Committee be appropriated for several purposes therein itemized, each item being considered a separate appropriation and that the same be expended only for such purposes, and that these appropriations be funded as follows. $43,537,14 taxation, raise and appropriate. $30,068 septic program, monies reserved for debt payments. $25,000 wetlands funds. $25,000 cemetery sale of lots account. $25,000 cemetery perpetual care interest account. $25,000 transfer station receipts reserved. $15,888 waterways fund. $72,866 enterprise indirect cost transfer. $75,000 free cash.
Is there a second? Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, we recommend in favor unanimously nine to zero.
Thank you. So, once again, multiple line item article. I'm sorry, I haven't read any of the line items yet. So, you will notice that each of these line items has two subcategories, salary, salaries, and expenses. If you would like to discuss either of those, please say "hold" because I am only going to read the total for each department. So, if you'd like to hold either salary or expenses, please say "hold." Moderator, 905. Selectmen, 408,519.[1692.13] salary or expenses, please say hold. Moderator, 905. Selectmen, 408,519. Finance Committee, 4,110. Reserve Fund, 50,000. Town Accountant, 177,991. Assessors, 246,314. Treasurer, 198,238. Collector, 214,688. Legal, 70,000. Personnel Board, 290. Information Technology, 264,297. Town Clerk, 122,231. Registrar of Voters, 82,754. Conservation, 122,660. Planning Board, 213,943. Appeals Board, 6,569. Town Hall Annex, 155,710. Property Insurance, 230,000. Town Reports, $100. Town Farm, $1,500. Police Department, 3,433,398. Fire Department, 2,233,478. Building Department, 156,335. Sealer of Ways and Measures, 4,600. Animal Control, 80,887. Shellfish, 64,528. Parking Tickets, 4,700. Westport Community Schools, 18,781,131. Regional School Assessments, 1,963,279. Highway Department, 843,422. Snow and Ice, 150,000. Streetlights, 10,000. Transfer Station, 278,141. Cemetery Department, 174,19. Veterans Graves, 1,700. Board of Health, 365,789. Commission on Disabilities, 1,000. Council on Aging, 245,917. Veteran Services, 440,845. Library, 269,292. Recreation, 58,760. Historical Commission, 1,250. Principal Payments, 2,230,480. Interest Payments on Long-Term Debt, 2,700,601. Interest Payments on Short-Term Debt, $10,000. Serpit, 2,900. Pension Assessments, 2,603,565. Health and Life Insurance, 4,141,000. So we have holds on treasurer, principal payments, interest payments on long-term debt, and interest payments on short-term debt. All those in favor of the remaining line items without a hold will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those line items are carried unanimously. We will now return to the motion to fund the Treasurer's Department at 198,238. Would someone like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jane Los. I have a question about arithmetic. Seeing that the treasurer's salary has been reduced, should there not also be a compensating reduction for the total amount shown in the salary line for the Treasurer's Department in the omnibus budget?
Is that a question you would like me to direct to someone for you?
Finance Committee?
Mr. Carrero?
I defer to the Board of Selectmen, if I may.
Ms. Shufa?
So it's true that the salary has not been there, but I would recommend that we keep the money in the budget so that it could be used for alternate employees in that department or to be used otherwise to conduct the business of that department.
Thank you.
But it would still have to, excuse me, but to clarify, it would have to be a salary expense, which is not a consulting expense.
The way that it's in here now would be personnel.
Is that a question that you would like me to direct to someone?
Yes.
So your question is, is it a salary expense and therefore not available for a consultant?
Yes.
Ms. Shufa?
That's correct. It would have to be used for personnel services. It wouldn't have to be for a treasurer, but it would have to be for an employee, is my understanding.
It would have to be an employee. Couldn't be used for a consultant.
I don't believe so.
So it would not be available for a consultant. Thank you. Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, Anton Viera. Considering I made that other motion... Anton Viera, considering I made the other motion, the logic of that is to use those funds to do the job, to get the job done. $30,000 that we reduce it to, it takes out about 38 out of that salary. It's still not going to be enough. We already, this year, spent $65,000, I read in some reports, for services within that department and loss of other revenues. So I think they're going to need the funds that we have. I've just taken it out of that particular position as an elected official. That's what we have control over town meeting on, is setting the salaries for elected officials.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion under the motion to appropriate $198,238 to the Treasurer? Treasurer's Department. Drop the mic. Thank you. So... I didn't want to call for a vote where our attention was still obviously distracted. But now, all those in favor of $198,238 for the Treasurer Department, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Pardon? Oh, I apologize. I apologize and thank you for pointing that out. So that is carried. So we now move to principal payments at 2,230,480. Would someone like to speak to that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Brad Brightman, Treasurer. The, I would like to make an amendment to make principal
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Would you like to offer some discussion about that amendment?
Yes, and the previous number included going to bond for $40 million for the school. And since that bid came over, and they're going back to the drawing board, and it changed what we, what the amount that we're going for forward is. We're just rolling over the $9 million that we had previously borrowed. We're not going for any additional monies until the bids come in, and we have a different plan going forward.
Thank you. So all those, is there any further discussion of amending the principal payments figure from 2,230,480 to 1,262,613? Seeing none, all those in favor of that amendment, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. And so now we will vote on the appropriation of 1,262,613 for principal payments. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? That is carried. We now move to interest payments on long-term debt, 2,709,601. Mr. Brightman, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, I'd like to amend that figure down to 478,102.
We have a motion and a second. Would you like to...
Same reasons.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to amend interest payments on long-term debt down to 478,102? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. We will now vote on appropriating 478,102. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Interest payments on short-term debt. Mr. Brightman?
I'd like to amend that to 280,000.
Interest payment on short-term debt?
That is correct. Since we will not be doing long-term, we will be doing more short-term.
Okay, so do I have a second? So we have a motion and a second to amend interest payment on short-term debt from $10,000 to $280,000. Discussion on the amendment?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Stanton Cross. I just would like an explanation from the treasurer. I think it's a little confusing and such a jump in numbers for a further discussion or explanation of what you mean by we're going to be borrowing more short-term debt, and how do you determine what that number will be?
I ask you to please not say "you" and to direct any question after the treasurer's statement, please.
I apologize, Mr. Moderator. I would ask that the treasurer address the difference in the increase in cost that his amended motion has suggested, and what's that based upon?
Thank you. Mr. Brightman, can you explain to us why you are suggesting that we increase that by $270,000?
Sure. So the original plan before the bids came in, we were going to be going, rolling the $9 million debt from the beginning of last year, that is coming up on May 24, to an additional $11 million. So that would have been $20 million. And then in September, we were going to turn that into a general obligation note of $40 million. Because the bids came in over, and we were actually in the middle of the Moody's conference call when we found out that morning, a financial advisor, et cetera, said, well, that's it. We can't go for any money if they've turned down the bids. The object of going for the additional funding was that the bids were going to contingent upon the bids coming in. Since that happened, all we are doing is rolling over the $9 million that had been previously borrowed down the road, until we have some readjusted numbers from the costs of the project going forward. So everything right now is kind of on hold. So what this does is turn it into another year, which ups the short-term borrowing of that $9 million. The financial advisor suggested that the interest payment would be 270,000, based upon 3% of that, rolling it over for another year. If we needed additional funding at some future point, then that we would have to fund that in the future and borrow that in the future. But right now, everything's on hold on that. So that's why the short-term went up and the long-term went down, because we're not anticipating borrowing the $40 million right now until we can go forward. Does that explain it?
Did that answer your question?
Somewhat. I'm just, the other question in my mind for the treasurer, Mr. Moderator, would be, is, we don't know at this point in time with the new school build, if it will be going out to bid in two months, three months, four months. And if it does, will the money be there in order to service, you know, and accept those bids by this motion? Will it affect it by this increase?
So your question is, will changing interest on short-term debt payments from $10,000 to $280,000 have an influence on our ability to accept bids for the new school?
Correct.
Mr. Brightman, that sounds like a yes or no?
No, because...
Thanks.
Thank you.
So any further discussion, ma'am?
Mr. Moderator, excuse me. I would request that you ask FinCom if they approve this or not?
Well, yeah.
If they're in agreement with it.
Would you like me to pass on a question to FinCom if they...
I'm sorry, that is exactly what I'm asking you to do.
Mr. Carrero, does the Finance Committee have an opinion on this?
Okay, bring on something else. On the reduction of the...
We're now discussing increasing the line item for interest on payments on short-term debt from $10,000 to $280,000.
I would have to say that the Finance Committee approved the budget in total, including those changes. It would be not prudent for the town to borrow money that it doesn't need at this time. It doesn't mean that the borrowings won't happen. It just means that the town could face arbitrage issues if it goes ahead and borrows and doesn't actually spend the funds. So that would be an issue.
Thank you.
So any further discussion on the motion to amend the line item on interest payments on short-term debt from $10,000 to $280,000? Seeing none, all those in favor of that amendment, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. So now we will vote on making that appropriation of $280,000. Any discussion on the main motion to appropriate $280,000 for short-term interest payments on short-term debt? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. And that completes the budget. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the cost of various capital expenditures in accordance with the town's fiscal year 2020 capital improvement planning program as described in the article. I beg your pardon? Article Five, how's that? Better? Okay. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the cost of various capital expenditures in accordance with the town's fiscal year 2020 capital improvement planning program as described in the article. Mr. Carrero, will you offer some motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate a transfer of the amounts listed from the sources listed and for the capital expenditures listed under Article Five in the warrant, in accordance with the town's fiscal year 2020 capital improvement planning program, including the cost of undertaking the projects and/or purchasing the equipment items as specified, as well as all incidental and related costs, with each item being considered a separate appropriation.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. So once again, line, multiple line item article. I will read each line item. Call hold if you would like to discuss it or would perhaps vote against it. Beechgrove Cemetery Road Rehab, $100,000 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. Transfer Station, $25,000 from solid waste receipts reserve. Demolish Old Police Station retaining wall, $250,000 from excess police state bond premium. Station, I apologize. Some of this is abbreviated and, please correct me if I'm speaking incorrectly. Waterline meter slash soft water replacement, $140,000 from the Waterline Enterprise Fund balance. Marine Services replaced rescue boat, $150,000 from the Waterways Fund balance. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen to borrow and to issue a note or notes as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Shufa, will you offer some motion?
I move that town meeting adopt the provisions of Article Six as printed in the warrant.
We have a motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer available funds of $187,985 to operate the Marine Services Enterprise as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and the Director of Marine Services. Mr. Carrero?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town adopt the provisions of Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion and a second. May I have the Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $175,207 to operate the Waterline Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2020 as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town adopt the provisions of Article Eight as printed in the warrant.
Motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously, nine to zero.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer available funds, $75,641 to operate the Town Beaches Enterprise as described in the article, sponsored by the Beach Committee and Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town adopt the provisions of Article Nine as printed in the warrant.
Motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available, from the Cable Television Special Revenue Fund, $142,247 to fund the community television budget for FYI '19 as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrero?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from the Cable Television Special Revenue Fund, a sum of $142,247 to fund the community television budget for fiscal year 20.
Motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously, nine to zero.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport bylaws and regulations relative to revolving funds as described in the article, sponsored by various departments. Mr. Carrero?
That's mine.
Ms. Shufa?
I move that town meeting adopt the provisions of Article Eleven as printed in the warrant.
Motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor, nine to zero.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee as described in the article, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. Ms. Slade?
Betty Slade. I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund's annual revenues and available funds, the amounts recommended for the purposes defined in the written recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor, nine to zero.
Thank you. Once again, multiple line items. Once again, multiple-line items. So, if you would like to discuss or vote against any of these items, please say hold loud enough for me to hear. If you would agree, please remain silent. The Point Terminus Historic Survey, eleven-thousand-five-hundred dollars from historic preservation reserves. Handy House Wood Shingle Roof, one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-two-hundred dollars from FY twenty estimated fund revenues. Head of Westport Stonewalls Restoration Phase Four, thirty-six-thousand dollars from FY twenty estimated fund revenues. Bell School Roof and Bell Tower Restoration, one-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-five from historic preservation reserves. Petty Farm Agricultural Preservation Restriction, thirty-thousand dollars from open space reserves, forty-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars from undesignated reserves, seventy-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars from FY twenty estimated fund revenues. WIA Santos Farms Playing Fields Completion, thirty-thousand dollars from open space reserves, one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand from undesignated reserves, and one-hundred-thousand from FY twenty estimated fund revenues. Community Housing, sixty-two-thousand from FY twenty estimated fund revenues. Administration expenses, twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred from FY twenty estimated fund revenues. Budgeted reserves, ninety-thousand from FY twenty estimated fund revenues. So, we have a hold on Head of Westport Stonewalls Restoration Phase Four. So, we'll take a vote on all the remains, on all line items of the motion, excepting the Head of Westport Stonewalls Restoration. So, all those in favor of the remaining line items, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Sir, would you like to speak to Head of Westport Stonewalls?
Yes, my name is John Chikotelli. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to whoever would be appropriate to answer this question, will any of that money be allocated towards repair of the wall north of the bridge, or is it just south of the bridge, on Old County Road?
Okay. Thank you. Is there someone who can offer and answer that question? Sir?
Tony Millam, Landing Commission. No, none of that money is appropriated for Stonewalls north of the bridge.
So, it'll all be for south of the bridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion of the motion to appropriate from CPC funds, thirty-six-thousand dollars from FY twenties estimated fund revenues to the Head of Westport Stonewalls Restoration Phase Four? All those in favor then will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire all or part of the Westport Camping Grounds located at three-forty-six Old County Road as described in the article, sponsored by the Westport Campgrounds Evaluation Committee. Mr. Carrero, will you offer some motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, and upon such terms and conditions as the selectmen deem appropriate for general municipal purposes, the fee or lesser interest in all or part of the land and improvements thereon, commonly known as the Westport Camping Grounds, located at three-forty-six R. Old County Road and Mary Drive, as identified in assessive parcel ID maps, number maps, thirty-five lots, thirty-one B and E, consisting of approximately thirty-one-point-two acres of land, more or less, and is funding therefore in all costs incidental and related thereto, including but not limited to costs of title and environmental investigations, closing costs and attorney fees, to appropriate by borrowing the total sum of eight-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand. And to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, subsection seven, eight, or twenty, and Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four B., sections eleven. Other, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town therefore, and further, that any premium received by town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of those costs of the issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, section twenty, thereby reducing the amount to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, provided, however, that the appropriation made hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of the town of a proposition two-and-a-half, so-called debt exclusion, question pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one C., section K., and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter in all agreements and take all action necessary, convenient, or appropriate to carry out such acquisition and effectuate the vote taken hereunder.
Thank you. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor, eight yes, one no, with funding by a debt exclusion, six yes, and one no.
Thank you. And I want to point out that there was a late change in this. The slide says assessors, parcel ID numbers, map thirty-five lots, thirty-one B and C. The motion that was just read says thirty-one B and E. So, the motion before us is thirty-one B and E, not what you see on the slide. It is otherwise all correct. Would you like to begin discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, may I...
Do you want...
Well, first of all, well, first, before we begin, let me just...
Please.
I'm Joseph Inglesby. I chair the Westport Campgrounds Evaluation Committee. And just for accuracy on this, there was a change that was noted, that the acreage is now thirty acres plus or minus. The reason for that is there was one lot that was mistakenly included in the legal description that was actually not part of the sale. So, it's thirty acres plus or minus, and those lots are thirty-one B and E. So...
So, I'm going to suggest, then, that you would propose an amendment that strikes thirty-one-point-two acres of land and changes it to thirty.
Thirty acres plus or minus.
Okay.
Yes, please.
So, you are proposing an amendment that we strike thirty-one-point-two and replace it with thirty acre... Strike thirty-one-point-two acres and replace it with thirty acres plus or minus?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of that amendment, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So, now, we face the question with that thirty-one-point-two stricken and replaced with thirty plus or minus. Okay. Would you like to continue discussion?
Yes, please. I could either do a review of the charge of the Westport Evaluation Committee, Westport Campgrounds Evaluation Committee, or I can move to amend the motion before us from excluded to included debt. Shall I do a description of the property first?
That is entirely up to you.
Mm-hmm. Well, if we go to the aerial photograph that I think is there, I can begin to speak to that.
Would you like to use a laser pointer?
Let's see if there's a better image there. Let's see.
Actually, if this does point...
So, first of all, I should mention that the Westport Campgrounds Evaluation Committee was charged by the Board of Selectmen to review the Westport Camping Grounds site for the potential purchase by the town of Westport. And in doing so, we're following the title of our committee. We evaluated. We visited the site on multiple occasions, and were impressed by the thirty acres of land, which is flat to gently rising. You can see through the entry road off of... It's a ninety-five-point-seven right-of-way here, or... And then enters in, this is Mary Drive, and becomes a slightly sloping campground site here. There are thirty acres, fifteen of which are developed as camping ground site. You have a flat to gently sloping land. At the upper area, you have a three-acre peninsula of land surrounded by a wetland buffer. This is actually an aquifer recharge area and is part of an aquifer overlay district. SciTech, on review of this site, said that this would be sort of critically important to preserve the future as a pristine water supply land, because currently on site, there are two deep-water wells that are draw ten gallons per minute of completely pure water, which is tested monthly for E. coli and coliform bacteria. They come back clean. Also, I think that if you look at the site, you'll notice location, location, location. It's adjacent to and abuts the tri-school community campus here of the elementary, the middle, and the high school, as well as the library and the tennis courts. If you ever drove on Old County Road during pickup time for the children at the elementary school, you see the cars are completely lining the roadway out to Old County. There's the potential of an access road that would be a direct access from the frontage of ninety-five-point-seven feet, which is sufficient and legal for a substantial connection to here, so that you have an independent access to the elementary school. But, what I should mention is that we were not charged to determine the use of this property, only the value of this property for the town for acquisition. But, there are some obvious points here. Location is one. Water supply is another. The potential for playing fields, although the use has not been determined, that's up to the town to decide, and the Board of Selectmen and other departments in town to decide how it ultimately will be used. Why are we sort of excited about this, and why are others excited about this? Well, we had petitions that were circulated throughout the town, and what we found is that there were hundreds of people that signed from all areas of Westport, all age groups, all income levels, education levels. There's a general wellspring of support for the acquisition of this land, for the town, for the future of Westport, just in terms of long-term planning. I should mention that this article is being co-sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, and the Capital Improvements Planning Committee. And the question before you tonight is not whether we should purchase it, but how we should purchase it. This is an extremely valuable piece of land for the town of Westport. It just makes sense to acquire this. How is about to be debated. So, if we go to the next slide, I can...
You have the changer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. Is it the top one?
It'd be the right button.
Oh, here it is. All right, here it is. So, this gives you a view and the connection, the potential connection here. And you see ninety-five-point-seven feet. This is flat. This is relatively flat. It begins sloping upward here. There are numbers of campsites in the central region. There are supplemental buildings, including gymnasium showers, et cetera. But, once again, it's not ours to make that connection. This is the area that potentially could be a future water supply here. So, you have the school complex, you have the library, you have the tennis courts here.
Excuse me, I want to interrupt just to let you know you have three minutes left, so you can finish your...
Thank you. And this shows the delineations of the parcels. So, it's lot thirty-one B and E. So, it's the entry area angling over, back of the property, including the wetland area and that peninsula, and taking you down and across. This area is relatively flat through here, gently sloping up through here. Wetland areas, potential aquifer and well site for future water supply is there. So, that gives you sort of a general overview. And so, we hope that we have your support tonight, one way or another, whether through included debt, which the Westport Campgrounds Evaluation Committee unanimously has voted for, or another method through debt exclusion. Thank you.
So, further discussion of the motion under Article thirteen?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay.
I would like to delete so much of the recommended warrant that asked that the debt be excluded, and I would like to insert that the debt be included.
Yeah, I think you have language there to do that.
Yeah, all right.
Although it...
Nancy Stanton Cross is one of our stalwart members.
And she has the floor right now.
I do. So, the amended language would be...
So, you move to amend by striking?
I move to amend and strike, provided, however, that the appropriation made hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon the approval by the voters of the town of a proposition two-and-a-half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter fifty-nine, section twenty-one, C., K.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to amend the motion before us, as you see here. All the rest would remain the same, but the language that is struck through there would be removed. So, any... So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that amendment?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Carrero?
Just to give folks here tonight, and those that may be watching at home, a little insight on why we voted to have it as excluded debt. In my remarks, you might have heard at the beginning of the presentation, that we're stripping money out of the operating budget when we include it as in the operating budget, when we take that, these payments out of the operating budget. The committee, the Finance Committee, is completely in favor of purchasing this property. But, we are cautious about stripping the money out of the budget, because, for instance, in my opening remarks, we talked about police and fire and other operations that may suffer in that instance. So, I think when we make a decision like this, we've got to think about the whole budget and how that affects other departments. It's a large sum of money. The Finance Committee is on board with the purchase of this property, but we're just not in favor of, at least not the majority of us, are in favor of having it as included debt.
Ma'am?
Yes, my name is Christine Stanton, and I am a member of the Westport community, as yourselves, and I am a former superintendent of the town of Swansea. And I just want people here to know that you have an incredible opportunity in front of you that I wish we had had in Swansea, not only for the school system, but for the community.
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt you, but we are right now not discussing whether we shall or shall not buy this property. We are discussing whether we shall rather... We have before us a motion to purchase that property, subject to a Prop. two-and-a-half debt exclusion. We are discussing an amendment that would have us buying that property with debt that is funded out of the budget. So, we are right now discussing, shall we do it contingent on a Prop. two-and-a-half override, or shall we do it with debt funded out of the budget? So, I would ask you to come back when we come... Once we settle this, then we will discuss whether to purchase the property.
I totally understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer, did you want to speak on the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Dick Brewer. I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, a member of the Westport Campgrounds Evaluation Committee. Many of you know me as a former... Many of you know me as a former member of the Finance Committee. I would like to share, and I'm speaking to this motion, Mr. Moderator, and why I support it, but I want to share with you the thought process that the Campground Evaluation Committee went through to come to the conclusion that we would prefer it be not an excluded debt, but a non-excludable debt instead that is part of the budget. And we agree with the Finance Committee that dollars, wherever they are, competing with other dollars, and I could see the rationale for the Finance Committee taking their position. We thought that a better approach would be to make it part of the budget because we believe the budget can handle this amount of debt. And already, there is in the budget debt of this kind. In the handout that we gave you, if you go to the last page, would you have to flip it over? It's easier to discuss with that in front of me. And we took note of the fact that instead of going to the voters and asking them to increase the tax levy again, could we make this part of the budget instead? And you can see that there is debt that is expiring from item, what's line eight there, called CIP, which was capital improvements in the year 2014. And that debt is now close to being retired, and that would take a burden away from the budget. Then we inserted, just as an example, it's only an example, on line 10, campground property, italicized there. It just plugged into the sake of discussion, that's all this is, the $895,000 purchase price spread out over 10 years to see what the debt burden would be. And you can see from the very bottom line that this can be absorbed with this budget. While we recognize, however, that the Finance Committee's argument is a good one, but we feel this is the better way to go. The Campground Committee members felt that we had gone before the voters a number of times, including the school measure and the police station, and before that, the fire station, and it became, I think, more of a philosophical debate. And we said, no, if we can do it within the budget, and the numbers do support that, then this would be the way to go. So I wanted to share that with you prior to the vote on this amendment, which I support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, I stand in support of this amendment as well, as a previous speaker has mentioned. I think we need to cut costs as much as we can in our town. We all pay taxes. We all got our tax bills recently, estimated ones as they may be, but we can see the impact. And we know we're going to be building a school, and this is, as another speaker tried to speak to, this is a great opportunity. This amendment even provides a better opportunity. It really kind of holds us fiscally responsible a bit more as we move forward with this acquisition. And I think that what we've heard publicly is that the cost of family who owns the property personally has gone overboard to try to work with the town in this, have payments over a period of years, if that helps out the town. So I really don't understand why we wouldn't take this as is with the amended motion that has been set forward to the town meeting. I would encourage town meeting members to vote on this and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend, to strike the language that you see in strike through on the screen? So seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That is carried. So we now return to the question of whether we shall purchase the Westport Campgrounds with, as described, minus the strike through there. So, Mr. Cole, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, but point of order, you usually, when you're posing a motion like that, spell out clearly what the options are. And in this instance, it seems to me you did not do that adequately. At least, I was not clear what I was voting on. And, you know, given my age, that may be a problem, but I don't think it's a...
Okay, I apologize for that. I will try to be much more careful in making sure that people know what they're voting on.
Would we re-vote?
Well, I would need seven people to rise and tell me that they doubt that vote, they doubt that I called that vote correctly, and then I would recall it. So is there any further discussion on the motion to, before us, to purchase the Westport Campgrounds as amended to be with the debt serviced out of the budget rather than the original motion to have it contingent on a Prop. 2.5 override? And so no further discussion. So now I'm going to call a vote on the amended motion under Article 13. The motion that reads like this, except that reads like this, followed by this. I'm sorry that it's this complex. Does anybody have any question on what we're voting on now? Okay, what is your question, please?
Are we voting on something where this will call for a town ballot vote on the debt exclusion?
No.
What are we voting on?
The original motion before us was to purchase the Westport Campground with borrowing contingent upon a Prop. 2.5 debt exclusion.
Okay.
That motion was amended to eliminate the contingency on a Prop. 2.5 debt exclusion. So we are now voting on a motion to purchase the Westport Campgrounds with debt funded through our budget, not contingent on a Prop. 2.5 debt exclusion. All those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried by a clear two-thirds majority. And tonight's attendance is from Precinct A 32, Precinct B 113, Precinct C 35, Precinct D 48, Precinct E 99. Good job, Precinct B, for a total of 327. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Landing Commission to the Board of Selectmen a portion of the town landing at the head of Westport River as described in the article, sponsored by the Landing Commission and the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Schufelt, will you offer some motion?
I move that town meeting adopt the provisions of Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? May I have the Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor, eight to one, eight yes, one abstention.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ma'am?
Yes, my name is Marilyn Pease. I have a point of clarification. I have a question regarding the information given here in the warrant. The current usage of the town landing at the head of Westport is mainly, right now, used by a business that's renting kayaks and canoes, et cetera, and also the town people that use it for recreation, their own kayaks, canoes, paddleboards, whatever. My concern is, why would the Selectmen choose to lease it for environmental preservation and educational purposes instead of those purposes being in addition to the recreation that it's now being used for by the townspeople? My concern is that if you're leasing it for these purposes listed in the warrant, then the current usage might be eliminated for the townspeople.
So I will pass your question on if it can be condensed to the point where I can pass it on. So what is the question?
My question is, why couldn't the, instead of leasing, as described here, why couldn't the purpose for the town landing at the head of Westport for environmental preservation and educational purposes be in addition to the recreation and the business that's down there using it now instead of leasing it?
So...
I can answer that.
Your question is, why would the purpose be changed to leasing from environmental preservation, educational purposes, and so on?
Yeah, my concern is that the current usage would be eliminated for the town people.
So is your question, will the current usage be eliminated? Is that your question?
I guess that would be a question, but it seems like, just the way it's written here, that it would be, because you're talking about, for the leasing, for environmental preservation and educational purposes, which is all well and good, but why couldn't those purposes be in addition to the recreation that's being, that it's being used for now for the town of Westport?
Well, they could, but that's not what's being proposed here. So would you like me to ask if this property, that if we act affirmatively on this, will the property still be available for environmental preservation and educational purposes?
No, I'm asking, would that be in addition to the recreation purposes that it's being used for for the town, or would that recreation be eliminated because you'd be leasing it for these purposes that listed in the warrant?
So I'm trying to understand this. So you're talking about the recreation for which the town people presently use it?
For which the town is currently, right. It says here, the purposes for which it is currently held is going to be then leased for environmental preservation and educational purposes. All I'm asking is that the town of Westport continue to be able to use the landing at the head for the purposes that it's currently using it for, and if it's, and not be leased for only these purposes that are listed in the warrant.
Okay, so...
Mr. Moderator.
Is your question, is your question, will the property still be available for the recreational uses for which it is currently used, if it is leased?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Schufelt, yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Well, you certainly can be next. So anything further?
So do we need to have that as a motion in this, to be voted on? Because if it's not in writing, how do we know that whoever is leasing it will deny whoever wants to use it for recreation?
So would you like to know if it is legally possible for those recreational purposes can be, to be denied if they are not codified in this article?
Yeah, we need it in writing here in this warrant. I don't know, you know, I don't know how to go about doing that, you know, to make a motion.
Well, you would have to propose an amendment, which you are certainly welcome to do.
I think that they know what I'm talking about.
I'm prepared to talk to that when you give me the floor.
So do... Ms. Schufelt, for the good of the meeting, if you can, if you think you can help with this, please do.
I think I can try, and I'm happy to have this be my time on the floor. The town currently, between the Landing Commission and the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to enter into short-term leases, and we are already leasing property to the kayak shop, for example, and that's currently permitted. What this article is doing is ratifying a previous town meeting vote. So a few years ago, there was a town meeting to allow a longer-term lease. This is specifically targeted at the Head Garage Building. The idea was that whoever took, whoever leased the land was going to make significant improvements on that land, and that would be beneficial to both parties to have a longer-term lease. So currently, we can enter into short, and I'm sorry, I don't actually know if it's the Landing Commission that enters the lease or the Board of Selectmen, but between the two of us, we can already enter into a five-year lease. But in order to enter into a 30-year lease, we had to have a previous town meeting vote to allow special legislation. That did happen. The legislature had to approve the special legislation. That also happened a couple of years ago. But this is more like a housekeeping thing because Westport never ratified the special legislation that allowed this. So we find ourselves in a situation where we can only enter into a short-term lease for that building, and by passing this article, it would allow us to enter into a longer-term lease with the parties who are currently renovating the property.
Okay.
Okay, but now, does that answer your issue about whether the recreational opportunities available now will remain there?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that clarifies that, but I will ask the question directly. Will the town of Westport citizens still be able to use that landing for whatever purposes that they're using it now? Will that change?
Will it continue to be public property?
It is a public landing. It's publicly accessible, yes.
Yes, yes. That's my question.
Yeah, so it is, it is a public landing, which means that it is accessible to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, I rise to try to see if we could add one, I want to do an amendment to this article and just include after environmental, the word "recreation." I think that would solve the problem. It's kind of a friendly amendment. I don't think that would go against what the Selectmen are attempting to do here, but it would allow and protect in the future that the leasing would be for environmental, recreation, preservation, and educational purposes. I would suggest that as an amendment.
So you would insert, you would insert between environmental and preservation?
Yes.
Recreation, comma?
Recreation.
Pardon?
Environmental, comma, recreation, comma, preservation, and educational purposes. So just adding one word to it, which protects the town's interests a little bit if down the road that becomes an option. I don't think that would go against, I'm interested in the Selectmen's point of view on this, but I don't think that would be a problem.
First, we need a second to the motion to amend, so we have a second to the motion to amend. So now, discussion on the amendment.
Mr. Moderator?
Which is the proposal to, Ms. Schufelt?
Could I, could I ask Town Council to explain whether that amendment might have an impact on the special legislation that has already been offered, or would impede our ability to act quickly for the leasing of this property?
Mr. Jenkins, can you answer that for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The special leg... Please. I just need to be able to close. The special legislation at issue here is actually Chapter 83 of the Acts of 2014, and the language in the warrant mirrors the language in Section 2 of the Act. The language in Section 2 of the Act says that the property may be leased for environmental preservation and educational purposes. The statute then goes on to say, the lease may be entered into with the entities leasing the property on the effective date of this Act. So my concern would be that, and again, I have no opinion on the merits of this, but my concern would be that if we add a word that is not included in the special legislation, that we could be creating a problem, and that the way the special legislation is written, which sort of grandfathers in the current lessee, is sufficient to protect what the gentleman wants to protect.
So your opinion is that, that the recreation uses are protected already, and if we add that word "recreation," we create the possibility that we were encountered difficulty in actually affecting this?
Correct, sir.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Ms. Schufelt?
It does, thank you.
Okay, so further discussion on the amendment to add the word "recreation." Yes, ma'am?
Deborah Weaver from the Westport River Watershed Alliance, we're the proposed leases. I just want to clarify that the portion of the entire property that we are talking about here tonight is one foot to the west of the building, 14 feet to the south, one foot to the east of the building, and onto the Old County Road. So we're not talking about the entire town landing by any means. We're talking about a very small portion of it.
Thank you. So any further discussion on the amendment? So, sir, do you want to speak?
Richard Vonica, I've lived down at the head for quite a long time, probably the ages of some of the people here. Anyway, this, I believe that area that they're talking about does block the access to the back of the land, which is probably another couple of acres back, excuse me, where there was another couple of acres back there, where there was once a basketball court for use by townspeople. Now, is that being addressed, that that can still be accessed over what is being leased?
Now, are you, are you, are you telling us whether we should or shouldn't? Now, are you are you are you telling us whether we should or shouldn't add the word recreation into this as an amendment?
I'm talking about the recreation, yes, but I'm bringing this point up, that the recreation, there were basketball courts in the rear of that building. This may be blocking off access to the rear of, which is still town landing.
Okay, so do, okay.
Unless there's a recreation word in there, and then maybe that'll open it up so that it can still be used for recreation like it was been previously used. I don't know where the basketball courts disappeared to, but maybe somebody can answer that one, too. That's recreation on town landing. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Tony Millam, Landing Commission. I urge the voters to vote against this amendment. It goes against the enabling legislation, as the Town Council pointed out. Landing Commission, I think my fellow Landing Commissioners, we can't meet, but I think they agree with the opposition to this amendment.
Thank you. Ms. Ryden?
Tanya Ryden, I really support the sentiment of the motion amendment, but given the advice of Town Council, I don't want to risk the board, the Board of Selectmen and the Landing Commission's authority to continue what they've already entered into. Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the amendment? On the amendment?
Mr. Moderator, just a point of.
Yes, Mr. Carrera?
I don't believe you asked the Finance Committee for the recommendation on this article.
Did I not? Oh, I apologize. Apparently, I failed to, may I have the Finance Committee recommendation, please?
We recommended, we had no recommendation recommendation on this article.
Well, thank you.
Just want to be official.
But I still appreciate you correcting me when I make a mistake. Thank you. All right, that's cleared up. Further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Cuttino, you want to speak to the amendment?
Yes, I just want to speak to the clarification of a previous speaker indicating that this article is only related to the area by the Head Garage building, but I'm sure that's not 1.8 acres, so the clarification only confused me more, so I mean, what are we really voting on?
We are voting on whether or not to add the word recreation between environmental and preservation on the fourth line of Article 14. That is what we are discussing right now. Once we settle that amendment question, we will go to discussing and voting on Article 14. But right now, we're just talking about adding the word recreation.
Was the previous speaker's clarification related to that? If it is, then my question's valid.
I'm not sure which speaker.
It was just mentioned that it only refers to a small portion of the lot, and so I'm trying to address that.
Can we try, can we just stick to whether we should add the word recreation? Settle that issue, which really doesn't have much to do with how, I mean, if you can connect why we should or shouldn't have recreation in there to how many feet beyond the border of the building the space goes, then that makes sense, but otherwise.
But you did allow that discussion, so that's all I'm saying.
I did, and I regret that. But I don't want this to continue going on and on. Let's settle the issue of whether we want the word recreation in there and then move on to discussing whether we want to transfer the property.
I would like to support the Landing Commission's determination that they oppose that.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment? Call the question. Okay. So for those of you who are new to this, a motion to call the question is a motion to end debate, which would now only be ending debate on whether we're going to add this word recreation to to our motion or not. So if you feel like you need to discuss that further before you can make a decision about whether or not to add the word recreation to our motion, then you should vote against this. If you feel like you have heard enough discussion to determine whether you do or do not want the word recreation added to the motion, you should vote in favor of this. If it passes, we will then proceed immediately to a vote on the amendment. So all those in favor of calling the question and ending discussion of the amendment to add the word recreation, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. So we now move to a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of, and so I'm going to ask you to vote, if you vote yes, that means you want recreation inserted between the words recreation, comma, inserted between the words environmental and preservation on in the fourth line of Article 14 as printed in the warrant. If you are in favor of that assertion, please say aye.
Aye.
If you are opposed, please say no.
No.
That is defeated. So now we return to the discussion of Article 14 as it was originally moved, which is simply to adopt the provisions as written in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Valcourt?
We have discovered that there was a typo in the original printed warrant where it says eight and three. It should say 83, so I'm going to oppose an amendment that we amend that to say 83, where it says Section 8 and 3.
Okay, so so we have a a motion to amend by striking the plus sign in the three in the first line of Article 14 and replacing it with simply a three. Is that correct?
Yes, so it should say Chapter 83.
Is there any discussion on that amendment? Discussion on the amendment? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of striking the plus and three and replacing it with the three, will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So we now return to discussing the motion under Article 14 with that amendment. And I believe you were, you have not spoken on the article, you only spoke on the amendment. Is that correct? Okay, so you would be next to speak on the article itself or on the main motion.
So I just want to clarify that this was passed in 20, this whole agreement was passed in 2013 by the town and then by the state legislature, so all we're doing is approving it here in Westport, which was never officially done in the previous years.
Thank you. Mr. Cuttino?
Okay, I'll go back to my previous question, and that is, are we voting in the entire head landing, or are we only voting for the area to be leased by the Watershed Alliance?
Is there someone who can answer the question for us? I believe it's already been answered, but let's get it repeated, that the question is, does this motion propose to transfer the entire head landing to the Board of Selectmen or only a small portion of it? Is there someone who could offer us that answer? Perhaps the lessee?
No, this is not the entire portion. It's the portion that it was granted actually in the 1800s for the purposes of the building. It's a very small portion of the entire site.
Thank you. Does that answer your question adequately?
Why does this still say 1.8 acres? It clearly isn't 1.8 acres around the garage.
Is there someone who would like to offer us an answer? Mr. King?
That's what the legislation says.
Okay, so we're authorizing something more than what we really are wanting to authorize.
Mr. Moderator?
I believe that this gentleman was next, but, sir?
Between this lease and the kayak lease.
You identify yourself first, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Richard Vonica.
Thanks.
I live on Gifford Road, right down near the head. With this lease and with the kayak lease, there is absolutely no frontage or access to the rear of the town landing. That's the question I keep coming to. The house right next to it, their access for their driveway or to get back into the garage has been cut off. Now, they've found other ways around that, but I'm talking about from the town standpoint, that is still town landing, and there's probably two, maybe more acres back further along the river that there is no frontage access to now. I don't know if that's part of the question, but I think it's important that it's brought out before any vote comes to do anything here, regardless of whether or not the legislature has passed it or not. This has to be taken. What happens to the rest of the town landing that cannot be accessed?
Is that a question that you would like me to pass on to someone?
Anybody that can answer that, sir.
Well, I suppose I can't really pass on what will happen. Do you have a question about is there public access to that property behind the building?
That's correct. It's these two leases, the kayak lease and this lease right here, take up the entire frontage on the road. Unless you take a canoe or a boat and then climb up over the wall to get to the back land, there's no other way to get to it. I just think it should be considered before we go, and I realize that it's already, I'm a little bit behind times, it's already been to the legislature. I understand all that and the legal questions, but I think it's important enough to do a lot of thinking about tonight before we vote.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, I thought what I was trying to do before was deal with Article 14 so we could move on quicker. I certainly support the intent of what we're trying to do here, and that's to extend the lease for the watershed so for funding purposes and the investment they put in down there. I think that what we have to admit here is we had kind of a sloppy approach when we dealt with the legislature in drafting this up to start with, and now we're kind of left with that. But I do think we have to think of other uses for that area. It's 1.8 acres, as the article says. It's not just the building. And the 1.8 acres gets into recreational use, and I think that not having recreational use in something we passed tonight, because we messed up before when we sent it to the legislators previously, I don't think it does anything but compounds a problem. And down the road, there may be town meetings asking why we can't use that area for recreational because we don't have it worded anyway. So I don't know why don't clean it up and be done with it.
Ms. Schufell?
Mr. Moderator, I just want to be clear that this article authorizes us to enter into a lease of 30 years. This is not the actual lease itself. The lease document is a different document and would not necessarily have to be the entire 1.8 acres.
Thank you. Sir?
Tony Millam again of the Landing Commission. The previous to the last speaker made some misstatements of fact. The kayak shop leases a fairly small portion of the landing frontage, as does the Watershed Alliance. The total square footage of the Watershed Alliance is approximately 5,500 square feet. Access to the rest of the landing is between the kayak shop and the Watershed Alliance leaseholds, and also to the east of the Watershed Alliance Head Garage building, there is public access there. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Gillespie?
I guess I'm gonna call the question, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, once again, we have a motion to call the question, so if you have heard enough discussion to allow you to make a good decision on the motion under Article 14, you would vote yes to stop discussion. If you feel like you need more information to make a good decision, you would vote no and will continue discussion. So all those in favor of calling the question under Article 14 will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. So now we move directly to a vote on the motion under Article 14. All those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Article 15, to see if the town will vote to petition a general court for a special act authorizing recall of elected officials in the town of Westport as described in the article sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Schufell?
I move the town meeting adopt the provisions of Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion, a second. We have the Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee made no recommendation unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Ms. Schufell?
I had a couple of bullet points on a slide. I don't know if you incorporated it.
Yes.
So it's a rather lengthy document, so I thought I would just bullet point the key elements of what's included in the overall document. So this is proposing a recall provision. It's proposing special legislation because we can't make this a bylaw. It has to be enacted by the legislature, so that's why it's crafted the way it is. The initial affidavit requesting a recall would have to be initiated by signature of 200 registered voters. Once those 200 registered voters, there's a process they'd go through with the town clerk to certify it and that kind of thing, that would kick off a petition. The petition article, the petition would require 10% of registered voters to initiate a recall. So there's a process and there's some language in there to talk about how that petition process works. Once the petition is certified that 10% of the registered voters are valid, the Board of Selectmen would give the elected officer five days to resign before they would call a recall. The election for the recall would have to be within between 64 days and 90 days out, but there's some provisions in there about if there's an upcoming town election that's already scheduled, and it's mostly just for expediency, so you wouldn't have an election and then, you know, 30 days later, another election. The way that this is written now, the officer who is a candidate for recall, the officer being recalled becomes a candidate for the office. They don't have to run, but they do become a candidate. Other candidates would follow the regular town process for collecting signatures and getting their name on the nomination form. There's also a provision in here that a recall cannot be initiated within the first or last three months of the term, and it cannot be initiated if there's been a previous recall initiative for that official in the previous six months.
Thank you. Further discussion, sir? Mr. Mello?
This is an all-around bad idea. I do not support it. I think it's too much process.
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself?
Yeah, Craig Dutra. It doesn't make sense in a small town like Westport. We have an election every three years. People know what their candidate's track record is, and they can make their decision every three years of the polls.
Thank you. Ms. Slade?
Betty Slade, through the moderator to Town Council, is it necessary that the first sentence of Section 5 be in this? Remember the problems that they had in Fall River? An officer sought to be recalled may be a candidate in an election to be held to fill the vacancy. Is that required in the legislation?
Mr. Jenkins, can you tell us if the first sentence of Section 5 is, has to be there by, for any legal reason? It's not required. So it is not required?
Well, I think that it is a, it should be eliminated. Why should the person who's being recalled be able to run again immediately for that
Do I hear an amendment?
I'm not making amendment?
To strike the first sentence of Section 5?
I feel like jeopardy. Yes. And I would like to delete in Section 5 the first sentence, an officer sought to be recalled may be a candidate in an election to be held to fill the vacancy. And unless the officer requests otherwise in writing, the town clerk shall place the officer's name on the ballot without nomination.
Thank you. So is there a second to the motion to amend? I have a motion, a second. So now discussion on that amendment.
Nancy Stanton Cross, my only question is, is I support the amendment. My question, Mr. Moderator, is maybe an additional motion, and I don't know if that's acceptable, to say that the candidate cannot run. So it's very explicit in there that, because the way the language is written, if we just delete per that amendment, it doesn't specifically say that if you're recalled as a candidate, you may not run in that election.
So that sounds like an amendment you may want to propose after we dispose of this one.
Okay, thank you.
So any further discussion on this amendment, sir?
Hi, Jeff Wade. I just have a question on this, probably for the previous, previous speaker.
Well done.
The the question is, is as I see it, if a person is elected and then 200 people don't like them. don't like them, then they can, then they can register their vote, they can sign a affidavit, and then 10% of the town can then kick them out. So if you have an election and it's 60% to 40%, within, after the three-month grace period, that person's going to be out. So I don't, I, I understand why you want to do that, but I think the election from the town will take care of it. That if that guy is not doing a good job, he won't be reelected. So I would, I would not, I would not be with your proposal.
So if no one else wants to speak on the amendment, Ms. Slade, you may speak for a second time.
I think this just happened in Fall River. It's been quite complicated. Basically, I don't like the idea of a person running. However, I have a problem with the whole idea of recall, but at least I wanted that out of there. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment? So we will now take a vote on amending the motion under Article, where are we, 15, to delete the first sentence of Section 5. So all those, so if you vote yes, you are voting to amend that motion by deleting that sentence. If you vote no, that means you would like that sentence to remain in the motion. So all those in favor of the amendment deleting the first section, the first sentence of Section 5 will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Those in favor will please raise their hands. Those opposed will please raise their hands. May I have five volunteers to count votes?
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I have a point of clarification before I vote. Simple question. My name is Ed Brown. When you say "election must be held between 64 to 90 days," that's the recall election?
Okay. I'm sorry, right now, we're only voting on, on an amendment, so I'll be happy to let you address that question afterwards. But we're proceeding to a vote right now on striking, now, a yes vote right now means that you are in favor of striking the first sentence of Section 5, which reads, "An officer sought to be recalled may be a candidate in an election to be held to fill the vacancy, and unless the officer requests otherwise in writing, the town clerk shall place the officer's name on the ballot without nomination." Basically, what that says is, if someone's gone through a recall process, they're going to go back on the ballot for that position automatically. If you, so if you are in favor of striking that language, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to striking that language and you would like that language to remain in the motion, you will vote no. So all those in favor, please raise your hands and wait until the teller looks you in the eye, points to you, and gives you a clear signal that your vote has been counted. And when that happens, please lower your hand, but not until then. Would all those opposed to the amendment described earlier, please raise their hands been counted. So the vote is 116 yes, 121 no, so the amendment is defeated. Don't clap yet, we still need to deal with the rest of the article.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Carrero.
May I propose an amendment to what's written?
Yes, you may.
May I propose an amendment to increase 200 voters to 400, 200 petitioners to 400 petitioners? We have, we have 11,000 registered voters in this town. 200 votes is standing at a-
So you're, first, let's, let's get the amendment and then you can discuss it.
I would amend, I would amend the 200 to read 400.
Can you tell me where that is?
Section 2.
Okay. So you are proposing an amendment to strike the word "2" from the second line of Section 2 and replace it with "4," is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, would you like to speak to that amendment?
We have 11,000 registered voters in this town. 200 votes, 200 petitions is very, very minimal. If we're, if we're serious about this, I think that more people need to respond to this kind of article, to this kind of petition. 400 seems fair, 200 seems very low. It's standing at, on the corner for a couple of hours and you'll get those.
Thank you, Mr. Valcourt.
Mr. Moderator, to the people of town, we, we initially had a higher number there. The 200 just starts the process, it does not complete the process. You need 1,100 plus to complete the process. The 200 just allows you to start the process, it doesn't guarantee that you will get 1,100 signatures afterwards. So we felt that the threshold should not be so artificially high as to discourage this from happening, but not so artificially, not so low as to encourage this to be misused and mistreated. So it's 200 signatures are to begin the process, and then once that process begins, those 200 signatures go away. You have to get another 1,100 signatures on top of that in order for this recall to happen. So that with 11,000 voters plus, it's 1,100 plus vote, signatures you have to have certified. I just want to make that clear, it's not 200 to start a recall.
Sir, on the amendment?
And I oppose the amendment.
On the amendment?
Yes, I was speaking on the amendment. My name is James Waterston, I'm a member of the Planning Board, but I'm speaking independently. I think that I would likely call a point of order if I may, and that is, I'd like an opinion from Town Council that a recall election can, can define the number of registered voters on petitions. My understanding, in the past, and I'm now not a lawyer, is that this signature, this language comes from guidelines from, from the Commonwealth, and that although, although we have some feelings here in town about recalling elected officials, I think, I think we would have a difficult time with changing this language. And I just like, like to find out from, from Town Council if that is, that's possible or not.
So what is your question for Town Council?
I'd ask Town Council if this, this language is, comes from guidance language from, from the Commonwealth, or is this something somebody thought up was a good idea?
The amendment to 400?
Yeah, right.
Well, I can pretty confidently tell you that that doesn't come from, from, from the state or by law, that was a amendment proposed by a voter.
Well, in that case, I really, in that case, I would really not support the amendment because I have a feeling that it's just another one of those things that's going to end up not having effect at all. So I'd like to just, if nobody else is saying, I'd like to move the amendment and I'm speaking against it.
Thanks. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, my name's Robert Als. For this motion, 200 is too easy, 400, it's a higher number. Elections cost money. Town needs all the money it can get. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any further discussion of the motion to amend the word "2" in the second line of Section 2 of Article 15 to "4"? Seeing none, all those in, and so if you vote yes, you will be voting to change the word "2" in the second line of Section 2 to "4." If you vote no, you are, would rather leave that language as it stands. All those in favor of the amendment will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Those in favor, please raise their hands. Those opposed? May I have the tellers return to the front to count votes? It'll go considerably faster if we have two more volunteers.
For this motion, 200 is too easy, 400, it's a higher number. Elections cost money, town needs all the money it can get. Thank you.
Thank you. So, is there any further discussion of the motion to amend the word "two" in the second line of section 2 of Article 15 to "four"? Seeing none, all those in, and so, if you vote yes, you will be voting to change the word "two" in the second line of section 2 to "four." If you vote no, you would rather leave that language as it stands. All those in favor of the amendment will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those in favor, please raise their hands? Those opposed? I have the tellers return to the front to count votes. So, once again, if you are in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand, keep your hand raised until you get a clear signal from the teller that your vote has been counted. All those opposed to the amendment will please raise their hands, keep your hand raised until the teller gives you a clear signal that your vote's been counted. Yes, 137 no, the amendment is defeated. So, we return to Article 15 as- Oh, yes, I'm sorry, 88 yes, 137 no. So, we return to Article 15 as written in the warrant. Any further discussion on that, sir?
Yeah, my name is Ed Brown, I just had a question, one of the earlier comments confused me a little, and the fourth point, it says, "Election must be between," and so on. So, someone will only be recalled if a majority of the voters vote for a recall, is that correct?
I'm sorry, so your question is, someone will only be recalled-
A person will only be recalled if a majority of the voters vote for a recall.
Is there someone who can answer that question for us?
Yes.
Mr. Valcourt, so, yes, recall will be effective if a majority of the voters vote for recall?
Yes, at the general election.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Sir?
Joseph Inglesby, I have a question for the, perhaps through you, for the Board of Selectmen. Voting recently, I just noticed how many positions are actually determined at the ballot box instead of being appointed. Usually, in other towns, important positions are appointed based on someone's credentials and abilities. A lot of people that were on the ballot who had no idea who they are or what they're doing, it'd be nice to have it formalized in some way.
Is this going to come back to whether we should or should not have a petition to legislature for legislation to have a recall procedure for our town?
It does, it does, but it's the bigger question of how we are on to this.
We are not talking about bigger questions right now, I have to ask you to stick to, should we or should we not, I believe this is petition to legislature for a, or authorize the Board of Selectmen, a petition to legislature for a special act for recall. That's our question right now.
And my answer would be yes, but then, look at the underlying reasons why we're voting on this, and I think that it would come back to the town to determine this might be a better way. So, that's just my comment.
Thank you.
Carolina Africano, I just want to point out section 9 to people, that wasn't bulleted up there. It says, "No person who has been recalled from an office, or who has resigned from office after the filing of a recall petition under this act shall be appointed to any town office within two years after such recall or such resignation." So, you're not only recalling the person, you're also precluding them from being able to either be appointed or run for town office for two years. I think that's a really important point, that people should know, that you're not only recalling the person, which could be for a myriad of reasons, that shouldn't necessarily affect that person's ability to run or be appointed for a different office, that has nothing connected with the reason they may have been recalled. So, I have grave concerns and I rise in opposition to this motion.
I'm not sure who is next between the two of you, can you help me? Mr. Whiten?
Hi, Jim Whiten. I have a question, and maybe somebody at the board, at the table up there could answer this. How much would one of these elections cost the town?
So, your question is, what would be the cost of a recall election?
Correct.
Is there someone who could, Ms. Sampson?
Our elections, depending on the size of the ballot, will cost between $8,000 and $10,000 for an election.
Thank you.
Can we ask the, can we put into this article some amendment to require the petitioners to pay for that?
You can amend the motion any way you want, it's a separate question whether the state will approve it.
Can we ask Town Council what his thought is?
Mr. Jenkins, will you offer us an opinion on whether, and correct me if I'm not passing this on correctly, that if we were to amend this to require the petitioners to pay for the election, do you think that that would be approved by the Attorney General?
Well, it's not going to the Attorney General, it's going to the state legislature.
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
But my opinion would be the same, that it would not pass the state legislature, that's probably an unlawful provision.
So, did you hear that opinion that it would be unlikely to, we wouldn't go to the Attorney General, my mistake, it's go to the state legislature, and Town Council opines that it would be unlikely to pass the state legislature?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am?
I'm sorry, I hit this by accident and I didn't want to mess anybody up speaking. Chris Wiley, I'd just like to speak-
Can you speak a little bit more directly to the mic, thanks?
I'm going to hit myself with this thing. Chris Wiley, in reference to the opposition of the recall position, excuse me, proposal, I would simply like to say that I am for it, I strongly recommend it, and based upon our town's most recent history, including our current fiscal year going forward in '20, we have every reason in the world to want a recall, that we should not need to wait for someone to be convicted of a felony before we can actually recall them from their position. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Habib?
My name is Michael Habib, and I have a couple of questions. On section 5, it's my understanding the first sentence has been stricken.
No, that proposed amendment was defeated, so that has not been stricken.
Okay, so, if you're being recalled and you're an elected official, you can still run for a position, your position, is that correct?
You will in fact be placed on the ballot.
Okay. My other question is on section 9. No person who has been recalled from an office, or who has resigned from office after the filing of a recall petition, under this act, shall be appointed to any town office, you know, you can't run for office again for two years. That doesn't say that there was an election, only that there was a petition.
In order for a person to be recalled, there would have to be an election.
But it doesn't say that. It says, "No person who has been recalled from an office-"
If they were recalled, the only way they could be recalled would be through an election.
Yes, but if you read it further, or is resigned from office after the filing, okay, so if you resign after the filing of the recall petition, then that applies to you then. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Any further discussion of the motion under Article 15? Seeing none, all those in favor, all those in favor of the motion under Article 15 will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Just to be sure, may I see the hands of those in favor? Thank you, and the hands of those opposed? That is carried. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport bylaws and regulations, Article 22, animal control officer and restraint of dogs as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen. Is a member of the Board of Health to give us a motion?
Yes. Phil Weinberg, Chairman of the Board. There are really two parts to this, first-
We need a motion first.
Well, I move to adopt the provisions of Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Thanks, is there a second? Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommend, let's see. Finance Committee made no recommendation unanimously, nine to zero.
Mr. Weinberg?
Thank you. So, the Board of Health welcomes the opportunity to take back the animal control office and to integrate it into its current and planned activities and oversight of animals, and in regard to the modification to the description of the animal control officer's duties, that was essentially negotiated between the Board of Health, the animal control officer, and the town administrator, with the idea of making those responsibilities more comprehensive, and also to be able to improve the effectiveness of that position. So, I strongly support the article.
Thank you. Any further discussion of the motion under Article 16? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport bylaws and regulations, Article 37, noncriminal dispositions of violations relative to tobacco products as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Health. Mr. Weinberg, will you offer us a motion, please?
Yes, I move to, for the town to adopt the provisions of Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, is there a second? Have a motion, second, Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee made no recommendation unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Weinberg?
So, these are actually, the amendments are really just editorial amendments to the titles of the statutes, and over time, the state legislature has revised the names of the statutes which the, which gives our town the ability to impose noncriminal penalties. So, there's nothing substantive changing in the regulation, it's simply a change of the titles that are referred to in the bylaw. So, it's an editorial change, and I think we should support it to be consistent with state statute.
Thank you. Any further discussion of the motion under Article 17? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport bylaws and regulations relative to protection of town beaches as described in the article. This is sponsored by the Beach Committee, is there a member of the Beach Committee to offer us a motion? Sir?
I moved, my name is Tim St. Michelle, Chairman of your Beach Committee. I move the town adopt the provisions of Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, a motion, a second, Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee made no recommendation unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you, and Mr. Leach?
Hi, my name is Sean Leach, I'm a member of your Beach Committee. I've been fortunate enough to live in the town my whole life, and even more fortunate for every day for the last 28 years, or best about every day for the last 28 years, take a trip to the beach. And over the last couple of years, something very disturbing is happening. What happened? In earlier times, people went to the beach, gather seaweed, necessary things. Now, like the piping plows returning in the spring, we have people that come down to take rocks from the beach. And this happens, and this is only over a one-week period of me driving by a couple of times, people gathering rocks. They take them, they pick them up in bags, they take them away. Now, it doesn't seem like a very innocent thing to do, but the number of times I see it done, and then when I see people filling barrels, and landscapers filling up the back of dump trucks, it starts to get a little disturbing, what's going on at the beaches. We're proposing a bylaw that protects this, and makes it noncriminal, and fines people who do it. And it's amazing how many people will go to the beach, and the methods they use to gather the rocks. This is a, put the bag in one spot and gather all the rocks. This is, open up the tailgate and fill up the back of the SUV with gate. This is, this one is, I pulled in and all of a sudden it turned into, I'm just going to look at every other rock and I'll leave the five-gallon bucket next to me, so no one should see what I'm doing. Additionally, there's all kinds of things that go along with it. This family affair, go down, fill up the back of the car, and then stand there while the person watching me do it can't see exactly what I'm doing. This is what happens when they do see that you're watching them, everybody has an epiphany, they become real introspective, they stare out at the ocean looking at the sunset. And so, all of a sudden, rocks become in the pockets and they just stand there. Now, not to be all done by all these geologists who are collecting rocks at the beach, is the gardener. This is what winter berry looks like when, late in the fall, when it's, the berries are out, it's a very nice Christmas decoration. This is what winter berry looks like in the spring, when somebody digs it out of the parking lot. This is a disturbing trend that I see more and more, we're all used to branches being broken for firewood and that type of thing, but now it's just gotten almost completely out of control. So, the excuses, when I ask people why they're doing it, or why they should be allowed to do it, are varied, and I'd like to share those 10 with you. Number 10, no one cares about the rocks, there's plenty of them. Number nine, there's plenty of them, taking a few certainly won't hurt. These rocks are dangerous to walk on, they need to be proved out. Doesn't the town have something more important things to do? I use them for my craft class. Don't worry, the vegetation will grow back. It's okay, I'm local, that was the other day, that was the beauty. If we take the rocks away, the sand will come back. Do you know how much money these rocks would cost if I had to buy them? And my favorite, and this was just the other day, my daughter is doing a science project on beach erosion. So, having said all that, and seeing what I've seen over the last, oh, 20 years or so, and the things that have happened down there, we're proposing this bylaw just to make it a noncriminal disposition of fine, to remove vegetation, injure vegetation, I mean, we all understand, children, grandchildren, pick up a couple of shells, pick up a couple of rocks, bring it home, that's not what we're trying to stop here, we're not trying to ruin somebody's fun for the summer. What we're trying to stop, basically, and I saw some tonight, actually, on my way here, is to stop the people who are just filling up trucks and everything with rocks, using them for rock gardens, they use them for fire pits, I saw a picture the other day of a beautiful outdoor barbecue made out of them, I've seen mantles being made out of them, and I saw a very nice driveway apron in Dartmouth made out of the rocks that a landscaper built from rocks at East Beach. So, alls we ask is you support this bylaw. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion of the motion under Article 18?
Mr. Moderator?
Isn't, in definitions, shouldn't that be flora means all vegetation, roots, not fauna?
I beg your pardon?
Under definitions.
Yes.
Vegetation?
Right.
Roots, et cetera, are not fauna, they're flora.
So-
Sean.
Do I smell an amendment?
Could you please change the word to flora?
So, you propose an amendment to strike the word fauna and replace it with flora under definitions?
It did say that at one time, I just noticed that myself.
So, okay, so I have a motion, a second, is there any discussion of that amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of striking fauna and replacing it with flora will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously, that is carried. So, now, returning to the question with fauna replaced by flora, Mr. Carrero, you wanted-
Just some clarification from the presenter, how is that going to be monitored going forward, enforced, are they looking to put cameras down there, are they looking to, other than driving by and catching people, I mean, it's a great tool.
So, your question is, how will that be monitored and enforced? Mr. Leach?
There are some existing cameras at the town beach, but hopefully, it's a discouragement, we're going to put signs up, signs will be going up immediately if the town votes for it. And basically, it's patrolled by the police, and this happens, you know, quite frequently, it's hard to police everything, but at this time, nothing's being done. City of Boston, DCR, has similar bylaws like this that don't apply to us.
So, the answer is, police, signs, and some cameras?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Ryden?
Tanya Ryden, can I propose another amendment?
Sure.
To delete the word fauna in line 1 and replace it with flora, and delete the word fauna, of the first paragraph, in the second paragraph, delete the word fauna and replace it with flora as well. Just to be-
So, you're proposing an amendment to replace-
Everywhere that the word-
All occurrences of the word fauna under prohibitions and replace them with flora?
Correct, thank you.
Thanks. So, is there a second? Any further discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, Mr. Habib, you'd like to speak to the amendment?
Well, I want to add to the amendment, because I'm a little confused, if you go to the definitions, the word fauna is still there, is that being replaced by the word flora? flora? Okay, okay, then I misunderstood, thank you.
Okay, so, if you vote yes now, you are saying that you would like to see the two occurrences of the word fauna under prohibitions, replaced by the word flora. All those in favor of that amendment, will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So now we return to the main motion with fauna replaced by flora in three places. So further discussion of the motion under Article 18? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion under Article 18, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport bylaws and regulations by inserting a new bylaw mandating an audit committee, as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Shufel?
I move the town meeting adopt the provisions of Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
Have a motion, a second, Finance Committee, recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion under Article 19, will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. And, I'm gonna do something a little different for the good of the meeting, we would normally only talk about one article at a time, but because the next group of articles are closely interrelated, before I accept a motion on Article 20, Mr. Valcourt's gonna give us a short presentation on the next three or four articles. Four, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. My name is Brian Valcourt, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen, I'm also a member of the Craft Cannabis Cooperative Committee. And what we have here is a series of four articles that we're gonna be asking you to consider tonight at town meeting. The first of which removes the townwide prohibition for any cultivation of cannabis for, anything other than medical purposes. So what this article intends to do is to allow for what's called the Craft Cannabis Co-op to exist within town limits. And what that does is it allows them, it allows our local farmers to grow cannabis for the cannabis market, only for the wholesale market, not at, not for retail. It's a trial basis, it's only, we're only gonna allow a total of five acres in the entire town to, to come under cultivation with this, with these particular sets of bylaws. So I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna, first, is the presentation next?
Yes.
So before I move this, I'm gonna just go through you quickly with what these are. So, first, first off, is why the Craft Cannabis Cooperatives were created. The Cannabis Control Commission of Massachusetts, in recognizing that they had cut out a lot of small players from the market, when they required that you had a $500,000 surety upfront before you could even participate in this market. What this, what, so what they did to try to alleviate that, is to allow for farmers, and it has to be a Massachusetts farmer, to be able to grow cannabis only for the wholesale market, not for the retail market, and allows them to sell to dispensaries, medical, both medical and, and for the recreational market. So, second one, you know, the second reason is, it also honors the will of the voters of Massachusetts, they legalize cannabis and, and allowed for the retail sales several years ago. We prohibited any type of retail market within town, kind of, you know, cut, cut our farmers off at the knees, a lot of them could use the supplemental income. You know, you look at number, the third bullet point, this increases the supply, unfortunately, with the, with the now licensing of retail facilities, the medical facilities are sadly woefully short of, of supplies for people who rely on this for medical treatments. So this would allow an increase in the supply, without having to go through the long and onerous steps it takes to become a marijuana cultivator in the state of Massachusetts. Next, this would, it really allows us to have an extreme amount of a local control on whether or not, you know, we want to expand this or contract this. Again, we have 61 square miles, we would only be allowing five total acres to be under cultivation, so this is basically a trial to see if this would work, and if it would be good for the town. There are extremely detailed measures that must be taken as far as security is concerned, setbacks from public areas, there are training programs and guidance documents, anyone who wants to understand what, what those are, can go on the masscannabiscontroll.com website and, and understand what those are. Okay? So, first off, the cannabis industry is gonna be, is regulated by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission. They set down all the rules and regulations for how this can operate, and then we, as a town, can impose regulations, and that's what these articles are doing. So first off, who is gonna be regulating it within town? That would be the Westport Planning Board, would first, they would have to go through a special permitting process, this would require public hearings, all the butters would be notified, there would be public notification before any of these hearings, they would have to come up with a proposal, they would have to have a community impact statement, they would also have to designate a certain amount of their profits towards betterment of the community, and that has to be detailed to the Cannabis Commission before they can even file for this. Also, up to 3% of their revenue can come back to the town in the form of a assistance fee for the town. The Board of Selectmen would have the final control over whether or not we license any of these sites, they would be, have, they would have to exist on a farm, or open, if it's currently open space, being converted back to farmland, there has to be a minimum of a five-acre parcel to even apply for this, so. And what is a craft marijuana cooperative? It's basically comprised of residents of the Commonwealth, they are, it is a limited liability company, all res, all people who are a member of that LLC or LLP must be residents of Massachusetts, one member must be a Massachusetts farmer, which means they have to have filed the federal, was it F1? Within the last five years, meaning that they have farm income in excess of $500 over the last five years, and they are registered as a farmer. They must operate consistently with the seven cooperative principles, you can look that up if you like. What they do is they grow, they grow cannabis and produce cannabis products for the wholesale, not the retail market, once again, this isn't, it's not gonna be sold next door, this would be going only to dispensaries, either medical or retail dispensaries.
I wanted to just let you know, you have about three and a half minutes left.
So they're licensed to cultivate, obtain, process, manufacture, package from brand cannabis and cannabis products in the state of Massachusetts, cultivation is the growing, processing is the drying and harvesting and packaging, manufacturing would be any of the compounding and things like that, that would only be allowed in the business and industrial district. And then they're allowed to transport it within the state of Massachusetts, not directly to consumers. Potential benefits for the town, can get up to 3% of total sales in the community impact fee and host agreement. Farmers would have an opportunity to grow cash crops and help their farms become more sustainable, they would also be able to hire more employees and pay a livable wage, and help support other farm activities besides this on the farm, so that you can still do other farm activities. This, this would only take place in what's called a limited access area, which would be fenced off within the five acres, with a total growth in the first year of only, of 20,000 square feet maximum. This can help sup, can help supplement the supply of medical cannabis, which is now seriously depleted since retail sales began. Massachusetts kinda put the cart before the horse, they allowed retail sales before they had the, the support for it, and it really has damaged the medical market. So, what do these bylaws seek to establish, basically, to allow these to exist, it would be a 100 square foot, so it's two and a half acres, in the agriculture and residential district, it's two and a half acres in the business and science and technology district, that's it. Five total acres is all we're allowing right now. If they want more, if we want more, we would have to come back to town meeting to allow more. If we don't want anymore, we can come back and repeal this. So, none of it can be grown in the central business district, any buildings that they would put up to do this growth can be no more than 10,000 square foot footprint, there will be 1,000-foot setback from any school, 500 feet from any playground, and 300 feet from any other dwelling or residence. All related activities must take place within the limited access area, which is fenced off by a 10-foot chain-link barbed wire fence, and has security, 24-hour security cameras with a double redundancy, which means you have two systems in case one system goes down. Okay? And the bylaws we're asking you to pass are, the first one is a general bylaw, which allows for this to happen within town, that just requires a majority vote, and so if you decide tonight that you want to do this, then it would be a simple majority that says, yes, you can, this can be allowed within town. The next three articles are the zoning bylaws that needed to be changed in order to allow for this to happen, and the last one, Article 23, is actually all of the regulations in which, how, and how this would be regulated. And it's very specific, and the Planning Board has a lot of oversight on this, and the Board of Selectmen have the ultimate oversight on this, as to whether or not we will allow these to happen. And again, there's a very long and arduous hearing process where the public can get its input, as to whether or not they think it's appropriate, whenever any applicant applies, you will have input, and they will have to spell out to the community how they're gonna benefit the community by doing this.
30 seconds left.
Okay. So this is what we're proposing, and this is what we're asking you to vote positively for tonight. Again, this is a trial, and we would like to see, you know, we've complained a lot about, you know, not having enough revenue, this is a source of revenue, other than taxation, that we could have, and that farmers could have to help supplement their farming income, and to help keep their family farms, which we are losing at a rate of several acres a day in Massachusetts, and a lot of them are going off to solar, you know, farms.
That's it, time.
Thank you.
Discussion? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. So we need a motion under Article, so, Article 20, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport bylaws and regulations, Article 69, prohibition of non-medical marijuana establishments purpose, as described in the article, sponsored by the Craft Cannabis Co-op Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Would you like to offer motion?
I'd like, I move that we adopt the provisions of the article as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee, recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended against eight yes and one no. Against the article.
Okay, thank you. So, discussion, Mr. Habib?
Point of clarification before I speak, my name is Michael Habib, is Article 20, does Article 20 deal with the farming at all, or is it just with the dispensary of the marijuana? I'm a little confused.
The, the town passed a bylaw prohibiting non-medical marijuana establishments in town at either last town, I believe it was last town meeting, and I believe that this would, this would change that bylaw by adding the language "but excluding craft marijuana cooperatives."
Okay, so just for further clarification, if you vote in favor of Article 20, you're not voting in favor of farms growing marijuana, is that correct?
You are voting to amend our bylaws, which, it's, it's printed there in the warrant, I would refer you to the warrant, to read the bylaw, and you will see the, the bold underlined text, which is the proposed change to our present bylaw.
Well, I'm, I'm still confused, it would be helpful. If you vote for 20, you know, I'm opposed to the farming, but I'm not opposed to, you know, having a dispensary in town. And the reason why I'm opposed to the farming, because I didn't hear any statement dealing with the odor of growing marijuana. And, and when I heard this was done, I just by happenstance went on the internet, typed marijuana farming, and I found a whole bunch of articles where people were negatively affected by the odor. If you have a smartphone, you might wanna try it. And I found it interesting, with all respect, that when the, when the proposal was made, nothing was dealt with the odor of the growing of the marijuana. The, the odor of the marijuana can tra, can travel 1,500 feet, which is a third of a mile. The bylaw here is you're within 300 feet of a residence, 500 feet for something else, and 1,000 feet from schools and stuff. From what I've read online, that's not appropriate, because it can travel more than 1,500 feet. If you have it near a school at 1,000, and, and you have this odor, and you have some kid with asthma, you're gonna have a problem. A lot of people have filed lawsuits over it, because it's affected their peaceful, quiet enjoyment in their own home. And, you know, it's not like we're having a farm in Minnesota, and no one lives within two miles of the farm. The other point is, there's been no, and I'm being redundant, there's been no real discussion about how to deal with the odor. It's become such a sophisticated problem that with the greenhouses for growing marijuana, now there are businesses being developed to deal with the suppression of the odor, so it doesn't spread into the neighborhoods of where it is. And, and it's gonna allow it in a residential neighborhood, as opposed to just an agricultural neighborhood, maybe we don't have just an agricultural neighborhood in town, but I wouldn't want one within 500 feet of my home, because of everything I've read online, and I, if you have a smartphone, you might wanna do it on your own, you know, and see what you can find. It's a, it's a major problem, the odor from growing of the marijuana, and, and until that's resolved, I don't think we should support it in town, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Point of information?
I'm sorry, you're welcome to speak, after the others who've already identified their desire. Mr. Leach?
Sean Leach, I have a question regarding the agri-entertainment zoning part of our zoning bylaw, and this particular. Under the agri-entertainment, my understanding is, if you have a facility, a farming facility, you can have events that utilize the products being grown on the farm, as part of the entertainment. And we have a big problem with several facilities in town, that are applying for things above and beyond, or expanding, you know, the uses of that, and I just want some clarification, possibly through town council, whether agri-entertainment would also apply to this particular type of facility.
So, so your question is, would a craft marijuana cooperative growing facility be able to host outside events where people would be allowed to consume the product?
Yes.
No. The answer is no.
Then just to follow up, I'm not sure that is written clearly in this, to that effect. And that's my concern, because when the agri-entertainment district, or use was allowed, it had all the good intentions in the world, but now it's become a problem, and I just don't wanna foresee this as being part of the problem.
Thank you. Ms. Powell?
Yes, Karen Powell, a member of the Finance Committee, I have a question through you, Mr. Moderator, for the speaker who made the presentation, about the revenue.
Yes.
My question is that, it is my understanding that revenue can only be to recuperate costs incurred by the town for craft marijuana cooperatives, so if we were to incur costs for the Board of Health to have to do inspections, for example, of facilities, or police details, or whatever might be required, that we could establish a community host fee that would help to recuperate some of that cost. But that is a break-even situation for the town, not a revenue source. And so I'm asking the speaker, because he presented it as a revenue source, to please clarify whether I am correct or not.
So can you tell us, is, is it in fact a revenue source, or is it simply a break-even proposition, as the speaker asked?
As spelled out by the regulations of the Cannabis Control Commission, it is supposed to recup...
to recoup, you're supposed to be able to recoup any costs incurred through the town host-community agreement. You have to justify what those costs are, and you, but, but they are recouped though. So, it's revenue-neutral in that sense, but...
So, we only recoup costs, we would not generate tax income or anything over and above that?
No, it's more for the benefit of the farmers than for the benefit of the town and its coffers.
Please, just the answer. Thanks. Sir?
Yeah, I, Bill Moncrief, and I have another question through you to Finance. How much money is the town talking about? 3%? Five acres of marijuana? I just wonder, they probably figured that out. I just want to know what that number is.
Well, I'm sorry, what, what number is that?
The town can recoup up to 3% of the cost of the sales.
Well, no, no, of the services that the town, that the town...
Up to 3% of the sa, total gross sales.
Right. To reimburse the town for the services that it has to provide.
Right. So, did, did they look into what, what that number is, 3% of five acres of...
So, you'd like to ask the Finance Committee if it has explored what the services would be that would be required of the town?
No, no, just a number.
What's, what's the, the, what's...
What would be 3% of five acres of marijuana? What's, what's the, what's the number?
All right. Mr. Carrero, can you tell us what 3% of five acres of marijuana would, the yield of five acres of marijuana would be? I'll be very impressed if you can.
That is probably one of, that is one of the main reasons why we...
Can I ask you to just tell us if you, if you can answer my question?
We don't, we don't know the answer, no.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Anything further? Mr. Viera?
Mr. Moderator, I rise in opposition to Article 20, and I ask for the support of town meeting to vote this down, this article, and it'll stop the other articles that follow this, that relate to this. I think the Subcommittee did a fine job, and they talk about a business model that could work. As a third-generation farmer, I resent it. I don't want to see this in our town. I see a few farmers in, in, sitting in this audience, I hope they speak up. This is, I think, a bad idea in farming. And we're talking about smell, that's the least of our problems. If I was going to raise marijuana on a farm, I'd be concerned about cross-pollination. And I don't know that we can put up signs, or we can put up fences that are going to stop the bees from cross-pollinating. But I know they go three miles, and there are people that raise bees in this community, and they could tell you better than I in some of where they go and how they control it. I don't think signage is going to be the way to handle the bees. But even more so, we have cross-pollination with wind. And in our area, in Westport, it's up to about 10 miles. Now, there are a lot of people that have been trying to have seed, organic farming, all kinds of stuff, and have a real headache because of the cross-pollination. I've read articles on farming magazines in Arizona, in Kentucky, and Kentucky has a long history of working with all kinds of alcohol, growing, some legal, some illegal. But there's a lot of data out there in the farming community that I don't see how the farmers are going to, you know, rally around this. I haven't heard any in town that want to do it. I've heard the opposite. I've heard some people are pretty outspoken and saying, what are you even doing? Why are we even presenting this? Why are we even talking about it? I'm not sure they're in the audience, but there are a few farmers in the audience, and I'd encourage them to speak up. This is a bad idea for farming. It's a bad idea for our community. It's a good business plan, it's a cash cow for somebody, but I don't think it belongs in Westport. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, I'm Henry Swan. I would have been opposed to this motion in any event, but when I heard the proponent of the motion say that this is going to allow craft marijuana cooperatives, the members of which can be residents of the Commonwealth, not Westport, but the Commonwealth. That's not what we need, is a bunch of outsiders coming in, making money off of Westport land, just like we had the problem with the tenant farmers, and I think we'll end up in the same kind of a lousy situation. Thank you.
Mr. Valcourt? Mr. Valcourt, you were next to speak.
I'll yield to Raymond. I'll yield my, my space to Raymond if I can.
You can step out of line if you want to, and, and I will put you after...
Then I'll speak, then. I just wanted to point out, once again, this, and this is exactly what I had expected. Section 6 of the bylaw, which is not Article 20, but Section 6 of the bylaw which regulates this, says, "No odor from marijuana cultivation process or manufacture may be noxious or cause a nuisance or danger to public health or impair public comfort or convenience." So, we do address it. We've addressed all of those concerns in the regulation in Article 23. This bylaw, all it would do was allow for these particular things to happen in town. The regulations and the teeth are all in Articles 21 through 23. Once again, you're being told cross-pollination is a problem. My degree is in molecular biology. I studied biology at a molecular level. You cannot cross-pollinate two different species of plant with each other. It doesn't happen. The only thing you can cross-pollinate this with is hemp. Hemp and marijuana are the, are the same species, they're just different parts of the same species. And they're the only cross-pollination that could possibly happen. And most of this growing, and for, if the growers are going to be doing this, they're going to be doing it indoors, in greenhouses or in enclosed metal buildings. And they're not, the, the problems of odors and smell and everything will be taken care of with a ventilation system, more than likely, that is all part of the regulations. The regulations only allow for you to grow it and transport it to another facility to be sold. That's it. It doesn't allow it to be sold in town, it doesn't allow it to anywhere else. It has to be fenced off, 10-foot chain-link fence, it has to have extreme amounts of security. This is a trial basis to see if it would work. This is not something that we're going to see go town-wide. It's a total of two and a half acres in the agriculture residential district, and a total of two and a half acres in the business and science and technology district. That's it. This is not out of control, this is not people coming in from out of town. This is people who are going to be in town, who own land in town. The only reason that we didn't limit it to a Westport farmer, which we did have in our original proposal, that it was going to be limited to a Westport farmer, was that through advice of town council, we could not do that. And so, we did not do that. And as far as getting a number on how much that money that would be coming in, again, this is not a revenue source. This is a tool for farmers who are struggling to be able to keep their farm and not sell it to a developer, and not sell it to a solar company, and not sell it to someone else for some other purpose than farming. That's all this is. It is not considered to be a revenue source. It is considered to allow the grow very specific, smaller entities, not these big corporations, to come in, and it's limited. You can only get 20,000 square feet in your first year. That's it. That's a half of an acre. That's all you're going to be allowed in your first year. And in order to get more, you would have to justify the need for it to the state first and then to us, and we would have to allow you to have more. And that's it. And this is, again, this is a trial. This is something to see if this is going to help our farmers and if this is good for the town of Westport. You can vote however you want, but the misinformation that's being thrown out there about the smells and about the trouble, and it's just, it's just not, it's just not true.
Thank you. I need some help with who's next. Sir?
Ray Reposeur, I'm the chairman of the Agricultural Commission in town. AgCom voted to postpone this whole deal a year so that the state could catch up because craft cannabis is, wanted to be ahead of the curve, and I think they're way ahead of the curve. So, we voted to postpone it. We did not vote whether we supported it or not. I get my information from the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, from Farm Bureau, which I'm a member, and from the Mass Association of Agricultural Commissions, which the Westport AgCom is a member of. I feel that at this time, because Boston has not caught up yet with what's happening here in Westport, there will be problems with Chapter 61A. There will also be problems for sure on APR land, which a lot of the farmland in Westport is on APR. If there's federal funds, those farms will not be allowed to grow marijuana. If you want to borrow money, a farmer cannot borrow money from a bank, they're going to have a hard time doing that. Banks are federally regulated. If a farmer has any federal loans, he's going to have to pay those loans back, back up to the federal government if he thinks he's going to grow marijuana. I think that, I'm not so sure, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't say that this is going to be good for farmers or bad for farmers, but the way the regulations are coming out of Boston right now, I don't think this is a huge benefit for farmers. I think my suggestion to the people here is, don't vote for this if you think you're going to help the farmers, because you may not be. Don't vote against it if you think you're going to hurt the farmers, because you, you may not be either. You vote for it if you want marijuana grown here, or vote against it if you don't want marijuana grown here. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Excuse me. Chris Wiley, again. In reference to the previous speaker and/or the previous, the presenter, excuse me, you can't hear me. Okay, we'll try that again. In reference to the previous speaker, I do understand that the current, excuse me, federal laws do restrict banking. They would question 61A, it would question their APR. But all that's pending legislation, so I'm not here to debate it, I'm just kind of giving a feedback on that. As far as the onus of the town having to recoup the monies from the different entities that may or may not open as a craft co-op, the onus of security, the police details, et cetera, is on the business. These are mandated by the state of Massachusetts. This is not like something a bunch of people set at a table and decided to just kick around and throw by the townspeople. This actually is designed to create revenue also through the host agreement. That didn't seem quite clear to me as the presenter spoke. However it is, it's supposed to, the craft ca, oh my goodness, I can't talk, I'm sorry. The co-ops are supposed to be giving back to the community, not just breaking the community even. They're supposed to be giving back to the community financially. This is a poor community. Some people take exception to that terminology, but when the police department chief has to sit in front of incom and beg for money, and the fire chief has to do the same, we can't afford the personnel we need to take care of us, like the paramedics, because our sleeping communities have grown substantially, according to the fire chief. He needs enough, enough staff. Like a most recent fire, we had to call it other towns. So, I understand concern. I'm a mother, I have four kids, they're all adults now, but I understand. But I'm asking you to look at the bigger picture. This isn't black and white. Westport has suffered many sucker punches in the past few years. It's about time we stood up and kind of took the lead on something positive. We don't need to sell it here. It's all around us. We don't need resident, excuse me, stores, excuse me, to sell it. It's in every town around us. That would be a waste of time and money. But I do think that we need to step forward. I absolutely do think so. So, yes, I do support this, and I respect other people's opinions. I hope you respect mine.
Thank you. Mr. Alden?
I think Mr. Dale, I mean, Mr. Walden was first.
Sure. My records had you there first.
Okay. John Alden.
This one I'm pretty sure about.
The Selectmen voted four to one against the marijuana co-ops, and the Finance Committee voted eight to one against them. Like Ray Reposeur said, the farming community...
Would you reference a previous speaker?
Previous speaker, sorry. Previous speaker recommended that, they're not ready to move forward with it yet. I think we should follow the advice of our town leaders and just vote this thing down. Want to bring it up next year, great, but it doesn't seem anybody really wants it, also the people who want to make money from it.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Jim Wooderson. I'm a member of the Planning Board, and I, I was involved in reviewing this article prepared by the Cannabis Commission. In spite of the reaction I see in the audience here, I, I don't want to crawl under my chair and not say anything. All your questions, all your questions were discussed and answered over, what, four meetings? Five meetings?
Five or six.
People on, on this commission are from the Board of Health, and obviously, we have one Selectman who, he stuck out his nose and said, let's give it a try. Originally, our recommendation, we did not vote on this, we just, we said, no, 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 it's too, too early. I can see right now that this group is probably going that way, and, but what I would ask is if, I, I, the other thing is, I've heard opinions about smell, and, and the town voted it down last year. Some cold hard facts need to be put here. The facts are that the smell will be controlled, the security on it is tantamount to medium-security These questions can and will be answered in the future. I'm sorry that it hasn't come across to you, but as women said previously, Mr. Moderator, cannabis is on the edge of our town right now, and it will be, well, the retail part of it will be affecting the town, simply because people will stop there, you know, on their way into town and pick up a bag. The last thing I want to say is, this may get voted down today. I would just ask that you not prejudice yourself against the movement of this. This is about the future. It is not about today. The, you know, the argument is, well, there's not much revenue. There's not much revenue because the commission has elected to make this the smallest amount they can so that if it doesn't work out, we can get it out of town. And I thought that these people have answered a lot of these questions. It sounds like they need to do a little more of explaining to everyone. I understand that some people are against marijuana, and, and the federal government stands, the federal government's only waiting until enough states decriminalize marijuana, and then these brave politicians in Washington will say, well, my, my state supports it, and the federal law will, will go down. This is the future. We can close our eyes to the future, or, you know, we can try to work with it. I commend the people who worked on the commission, they, they worked hard. And I want to say that I, I respect whatever the vote comes out here. I only ask that you continue to listen, because it's, like all change, it's going to happen with or without us. I'll just leave it at that, Mr. Moderator, and, you know, I, I hope that the town has an open mind to this in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Gillespie?
Call the question.
So, we have a motion to call the question. So, once again, we're going to take a vote on whether to continue discussion of the motion under Article 20. A yes vote now means you've heard enough discussion to make your decision about Article 20, the motion under Article 20. A no vote means you need more information, you'd like to discuss it further. So, all those in favor of calling the question and ending discussion will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
That is carried.
So now, all those in favor of the motion under Article 20, will please raise their Thank you. Okay, let's back up. We are now voting on the motion under Article 20. The motion is that we adopt the provision of Article, provisions of Article 20 as printed in the warrant. So, if you vote yes, the town will alter the bylaw listed under Article 20 by adding the language in boldface underlined in the warrant. If you want that to happen, you will vote yes. If you do not want that to happen, you will vote no. If you do not want that to happen, you will vote no. Does anybody have any question on that? Okay. All those in favor will please raise their hands. Thank you. Those opposed? That is defeated. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport zoning bylaws relative to craft marijuana cooperatives as described in the article, sponsored by Craft Cannabis Co-op Committee and Board of Selectmen. Mr. Valcourt?
Move to pass over Article 21.
So a motion to pass over is a motion to take no action under this article. Is there a second? Another motion, a second to pass over, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor passing over Article 21, will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport zoning bylaws relative to craft marijuana cooperatives as described in the article, Craft Cannabis Co-op Committee and Board of Selectmen. Mr. Valcourt?
Move to pass over.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion of the motion to pass over? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. We pass over Article 22. Article 23?
Move to pass Article 23.
Second, any discussion of the motion to pass over Article 23? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. We pass over Article 23. Article 24, see if the town will vote to amend the town of Westport zoning bylaws relative to solar energy systems as described in the article sponsored by the planning board. Mr. Whiten, will you offer us the motion?
I move to adopt.
Can you speak it more directly into the microphone?
I move to adopt.
Still can't, it's not coming through. Is it turned off?
Hello?
There.
Okay. I move to adopt the provisions of Article 24 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee make no recommendation unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Whiten?
Okay. We have no presentation, but the solar energy systems in 2013 Annual Town Meeting approved zoning bylaws regulating small and large-scale solar energy systems. Since then, eight large solar energy systems have been approved by the town. Five systems have been constructed. We have four new filings, and I think we might have had one or two more this week. We have, based on the number of filings and the projects that have been constructed, the planning board is proposing changes to the following sections of that bylaw. 24.3.1, purpose. 24.3.3, special permit. 24.3.5, required review and permitting. 24.3.8, dimensional requirements. 24.3.11, design standards. These changes are designed to strengthen the regulations and give the board more oversight in the review process. A short description of what the changes are. It increases the setbacks from property lines and street lines. It redefines what can be done in the setback areas. It imposes greater restrictions on buffer zones and screening to protect abutting properties and scenic vistas, and it regulates the size, the maximum size of the facilities and the minimum size in the clearing areas. So it requires that there be 100-foot setback from side yards of undisturbed area, 100 feet from the wetlands line, and 250 feet from the street. And it requires a maximum clearing size of 16 acres.
Thank you.
And the Westport Planning Board unanimously recommends the enactment of this bylaw.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment about this and maybe ask some questions. The bylaw itself makes a lot of sense. Of course, everything needs to be regulated. Something of the size of these needed to be regulated, but these amendments seem more to try to make the solar arrays invisible, almost as if they're landfills that we want to keep hidden. Personally, I think it's something to be proud of, in Westport, that we have so much solar energy, but that's my own personal opinion. But I keep seeing the word "visual impact." Could somebody from the planning board please define for me what visual impact is? Does that mean if you can see it, there's a visual impact? Or does it mean if it makes something ugly, there's a visual impact? It's just a general term that's thrown around and pretty discretionary, and I just would like to hear a good definition for it.
Mr. Whiten, can you give us a definition of visual impact?
I'm not sure I can give you a complete definition, but I can tell you that we're trying to minimize the visual presence of these so that you don't see them on a regular basis. I think abutters and some view sites from roads, you can see them, but we're trying to keep that at a minimum to preserve the rural character of Westport.
Thank you.
Through the moderator. So essentially, you are proposing that we make them invisible. Is that correct?
I think I can answer that, that it doesn't, that the article does not propose to make them invisible.
So I...
But is it...
Go ahead.
Well, would you like to ask the planning board if this proposes to make solar installations invisible?
Yeah, please.
Does this propose to make the solar installations invisible?
It was not our intention.
So then, I still don't have a good definition of what a visual impact is?
Well, the visual impact is a heading of this bylaw that has below it five, six paragraphs that describe the visual impact.
It says that we, essentially, what it's saying is, we don't want visual impacts, but it's not saying what a visual impact is. I mean, if you're proposing to make them invisible, then whatever it is, then that accomplishes that, but otherwise, I still don't know what a visual impact is. I mean, does it paint stripes on the greenery? Does it turn it into desert? I don't know. I just don't honestly know what a visual impact is.
Well, I'll be happy...
I mean, if it's showing up, if I'm driving by and I see a little glimpse of a solar array through the woods, is that a visual impact?
Would you like me to ask the chairman of the planning board if...
Yes, I'm essentially asking through you to them.
Is glimpsing a solar installation through the woods a visual impact for the purposes of this bylaw? Is that your question?
Yes.
Mr. Whiten?
I would say, of course, it is a visual... I think that if you can see it, it has some impact, and what we're trying to do is minimize that so it isn't up and down main road.
So just to answer his question, anything that you can see has a visual impact. Is that correct?
Yes.
So then I am correct in that the amendments are trying to make solar arrays invisible?
Is that a question or a...
That's a question, yes.
I am not going to answer whether you are correct or not. I will pass on your question. I think you already asked if the bylaw is intending to make solar installations invisible.
Yes, I'm getting two different messages here. I mean, and my logic question is, can we just get a better definition of a visual I mean, let me change a little bit to make more... Can I propose that we amend this to get a better definition of a visual impact?
If you can give me proposed amendment language, if you can tell me what you would like to strike or add, and if it's simple enough that we can all understand it, you can do it from the mic. If it's more complex than that, I would ask you to write it out for me, and I will let you return to a microphone to propose that amendment.
Yeah, okay. Let me, well, let me make a motion that we revisit this with a better definition of a visual impact.
But that's not something that I can accept a motion to do. You're welcome to propose an amendment, provided you can state clearly what that amendment is. You heard when we amended some of the other articles, we would say, "We're striking this language and we're replacing it with that." If you can say that, we can certainly accept that motion to amend it if you can tell us specifically what your amendment would be. But to say generally, to ask it to have a better definition of visual impact, I can't really accept the motion.
Okay. Well, unfortunately, I'm not prepared to do that tonight, so I guess I'll just have to step back and let it pass the way it be voted on the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is John Repose, Mr. Moderator, and my wife and I have attended a few of the planning board meetings in regards to solar, and I would like to make an amendment to this article.
Can you speak a little more directly into the microphone?
Sure. I would like to make an amendment to this article as presented. It'd be Item 4, Section 24.3.8, where the chart is listed, where it says residential slash agricultural district. I would recommend that we eliminate that column completely, so there will be no solar, large-scale solar allowed in any residential or agricultural district. Solar arrays are commercial.
Okay, so right now, you are making a motion to amend the motion before us now by striking the entire second column of the table in Item 4, 24.3.8?
That's correct.
Okay.
Where it says, right under where it says residence, agricultural district.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion to amend? So would you like to speak to that amendment?
Yes. After many meetings with the planning board, the production of electricity is a commercial enterprise, and that's what the solar arrays are. It's a commercial enterprise, and we have, I have the personal opinion that I don't think a commercial enterprise belongs in a residential agricultural district. And that's my take on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment. Mr. Whiten?
I would like to ask town council through you whether this goes beyond the scope of these amendments that are in the warrant, that it can change the original article from five years ago?
That is not a call for town council. That is a call for me.
Okay.
Anything that decreases the... So this, you are proposing to add this table to the... Is the table part of what is being added to the bylaw? Because it's not in boldface and underlined, but it's within boldface underlined.
I think the table exists in the original bylaw. The dimensional requirements exist.
Okay. So I cannot accept a motion to make existing regulation more restrictive, because that would be outside of the scope of the article. So the, I'm sorry, the setbacks, the dimensional... So which lines of the table, please, are currently existing?
The maximum heights are the same. In the previous article, there was no maximum clearing area. There was no setback from wetland resource areas. The minimum setback from the street was not 250 feet.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
My amendment here is, everything that's in bold print is a change in the original order. So that's why I made the motion, my amendment, was to get rid of what's in bold print, eliminate that second section. That was my intention here, is to eliminate that.
Right.
So it would eliminate any solar development in a residential agricultural district.
I understand that, and with this written in bold and underlined, it appears to be something that we are proposing to add to regulations at this meeting. And if that's the case, then your amendment would be in order. But I'm...
That's to be added.
The changes are making it more restrictive in both the residential and the business districts, but it is not new in this article that it's allowed in the residential agricultural
I'm going to take a short recess and talk to town council for a second here.
It is too late at night, but here's the assistant. So there are 100-foot setbacks, front, rear, and side, under the existing bylaw. That's correct. He can reduce that to 100. That's correct. And the setback from wetlands as well, because that doesn't exist in the present bylaw. The height requirement is, he can eliminate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your patience with that. We had to compare this to the text of the existing bylaw. So if the gentleman who proposed that amendment... So what I can accept a motion to change is to remove the minimum lot size from residence slash agricultural districts of five acres. I can approve an amendment to reduce the minimum setback from street lines to 100 feet. We can delete minimum setback from wetlands areas. We can delete minimum... So basically, we would have to retain the minimum setback from property lines of 100 feet, and we could only reduce minimum setback from street lines to 100. So if you would like to make a motion to delete the second column of the table under Item 4, 2.4.3.8, with the exception of minimum setbacks from property lines, and... lines, and reducing minimum setbacks from street lines from 250 feet to 100 feet, I could accept that motion.
At this time, Mr. Moderator, I will refer with council, and I will withdraw my amendment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Burns.
So, we return to discussion of the main motion under Article 24 unamended. Sir?
I'll say.
Please.
Walter Burns. What I have to say is in opposition to four, clearing area, and 24.3.8, in order to sustain the quality of life in our residential agricultural neighborhoods for this generation and future generations, in order to prepare for and mitigate the impacts of global warming, climate change, on Westport communities, we must defend Westport's climate forests. Deforestation by clearcutting and clearcutting of an untold number of mature trees in our woodlands for commercial solar facilities raises serious questions about the management of our natural resources when one considers that the trees provide so many benefits to our natural environment and are such an important resource to combat the effects of climate change on a local level. And the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, referred to as DUA, has produced a model zoning bylaw which includes the following guidance on siting preferences. When a solar facility is sited, as well as placement on the site once selected, is an important consideration, particularly in regard to large-scale ground-mounted facilities. DUA strongly discourages locations that result in significant loss of land and natural resources, including farms and forest lands, and encourages rooftop sitting as well as locations in industrial and commercial districts or on vacant disturbed land. Significant tree cutting is problematic because of the important water management, cooling, and climate benefits trees provide. This philosophy of clearcutting of trees as being detrimental to our environment is supported by the Buzzers Bay Coalition, the Nature Conservancy, and Mass Audubon. And among other things, the forests in our town are so very important to the preservation of the scenic Westport River. We cannot afford the pollution that's occurring from stormwater runoff, from air pollution, and from pollution of our streams feeding into the river. So, I think I would like to make an amendment that we restrict tree cutting to one acre for any 16-acre site.
So, once again, if you're going to propose an amendment, I have to ask you what language you would propose to strike and what language you would propose to insert.
That would be the fourth in that article, 24.3.8, it applied to four clearing area on pages 24 and 25.
So, what language would you like to strike? What language would you like to insert?
Well, I'd like to strike that tree cutting not be allowed.
It doesn't say that.
Pardon?
It does... That language is not there. So...
Says maximum clearing areas, 16 acres. Well, if these... If a significant number of 16 acres consists of trees, of forest land...
I'm sorry. Can you tell me what section you're looking at?
24.3.8 on page 23. And it's the last line in the column. It says maximum clearing areas, four, 16 acres. 16 acres in residence agricultural district.
24.3...
In the table.
24, item four.
Under... Oh, in the table. Okay.
It's the table.
Okay.
And it's the last line in the table.
Okay. I apologize. Yep.
Maximum clearing area is four. It says 16 acres. And I'm proposing if the 16 acres consist of woodlands, that not more than one acre be allowed to be clear cut, to preserve forest land.
So, what language would you like to strike? What language would you like to insert? Would you like to strike the number 16 and replace it with the number one?
Right. Correct.
So, you are moving to amend the motion by striking 16 from the last entry in the center column, striking 16 and replacing it with one?
Yeah, under residence agricultural district.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion to amend? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do you wish to speak further on the amendment?
Not at this moment.
Okay. Mr. May, you're next to the line. Would you like to speak to the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I rise in opposition to this amendment. One acre solar will kill solar development in the town of Westport. And we have to move toward a sustainable renewable future. Cape Cod has killed 430 megawatts of wind. Northern New Hampshire has killed 1,100 megawatts of hydro. We here on the South Coast, with the best sun resources, solar resources in New England, should stand up and support renewables. And so, I do support Article 24. I think the planning board is well-intended with this article.
Okay. Although, just on the amendment, right now...
Yes, with this amendment, I do oppose it.
Thank you. Mr. Whiten on the amendment?
Yeah, I rise in opposition. I'd like to say that on the next page, it describes what the clearing area is. It shall include all areas of the parcel being disturbed. It doesn't say clear-cut forest or woodland. The access drive shall also be included in this area. Clearing areas may be increased by up to 50 percent, provided the board finds that the visual impact as described in 24.2.11.D. is not detrimental to the abutters or the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Weinberg?
Phil Weinberg. I want people to kind of put into perspective, even though, being on the Conservation Commission, we review these, and we're very concerned about clearcutting of forest. But right now, the minimum building lot, if I understand it, is an acre and a half. And so, in effect, you would be saying, if someone had a... If you really wanted to protect all the trees in Westport, you'd kind of be saying, "Well, if someone owned a 16-acre lot, you know, they couldn't build a house on it because..." Or they would, you know, you couldn't touch that size acre. I appreciate the sentiment. I think it's too small, and I do think it would kill solar here. And I think there are better ways or more surgical ways of addressing the problems than adopting the amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Leach on the amendment?
I'd like to call a question.
Thank you. So, we're now going to take a vote on whether we want to further discuss the amendment, not the main motion, but the amendment. So, we are... If you vote yes, you have heard enough discussion on the amendment to change the number 16 to the number one in the last line of the center column of the table in item four, 24.3.8. So, all those in favor calling the question, will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. So, we now move on to the amendment. So, now, if you vote yes, you are voting to change the number 16 in the bottom cell of the central column of the table under item four, 2.4.3.8. If you vote no, you are choosing to leave that at 16. So, all those in favor of amending the 16 to one, will please say aye? Those opposed?
No.
May I see hands of those in favor, please? And hands of those opposed? That is defeated. So, we now return to the unamended main motion under Article 24. Is there any further discussion of that? Ma'am?
Mr. Moderator, I'm Kate Schmidt. I just have a question for... Through you to the Chair of the Planning Board. It's my understanding that this article adds more regulation to solar rather than expanding it. Is that correct?
Mr. Whiten, does this increase the regulation of solar installations?
Yes.
Thank you.
To make it less visually apparent?
Yes.
But not total area. Is that correct?
But, sorry, but it does not decrease the total area?
Does not increase the total area permitted for one solar farm?
So, you're asking, does it increase the permissible size of a solar farm?
Correct.
It decreases.
It decreases it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, any further discussion of the motion under Article 24? Seeing none, all those in favor will please raise their hands? Those opposed? That is carried by a clear two-thirds majority. Article 25, to see if the town will amend the personnel bylaws as described in the article sponsored by the Board of Health and Board of Selectmen. Ms. Shufell, will you offer some motion?
I move the town adopt the provisions of Article 25 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee makes no recommendation unanimously, nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion under Article 25, will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to amend the personnel bylaws relative to fringe benefits and working conditions as described in the article. This is by petition. Petitioner, would you like to offer some motion?
Yep. I move the town adopt provisions of Article 26 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Motion, second, Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended against, eight yes, one no.
Would you like to begin discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to lay out why this petition came to be. The clause that is listed in the warrant was put into the personnel bylaws quite a few years ago. In the past, all changes in the personnel bylaws have been voted on by town meeting or the Board of Selectmen. Since this clause exists, it doesn't happen. The union fights very hard for the little bit that they receive every single year. As a union member in town, we pay $192 a year for dues to get what little we have. Since this clause has been placed in the personnel bylaws, once a union contract is signed, it is automatically... Anything that's in there is placed in the personnel bylaws without a vote of the Board of Selectmen or town meeting. The article is not asking to take anything away from any non-union employee or contract employee. Everything that's in the personnel bylaws will still exist. Non-union employees do have an outlet of going to the Board of Selectmen or the Personnel Board at any time to negotiate their own salaries, vacations, to have their own contract. So, we're not asking to take anything away. Also, the clause mentions health insurance and life insurance, which is not a union item. Unions do not negotiate their own health insurance or life insurance in town. We have one health insurance, one life insurance that's offered to all non-union, union employees alike. So, having that piece in there is kind of a misconception that we do negotiate that. Also, in the personnel bylaws, the non-union employees that are covered in there, they do receive more benefits than union employees do. So, for this clause to have them automatically receive what the union spends months negotiating for, they also receive more vacation days, and most of the salaries of the hourly clerks that are the same positions in the union make $5 to $7 more an hour than your union employees. So, we're just asking to remove this clause so that in the future, when the union does negotiate a contract, someone, whether it be the town administrator or a non-union designee, goes in front of the Board of Selectmen and asks for what the union has received in their hard-working negotiations.
Thank you. Can I ask those of you who are speaking to one another to either do it not at all or more quietly? Because it's actually... It's distracting to me up here, and if it is to me, I'm sure it is to the people around you as well. Ma'am?
Hi. My name's Denise Bouchard. I'm a non-union employee who this would affect me. We worked very hard in 2012 to get this passed because we had gone two years without getting an increase in benefits which the union had had. So, it's not only... If you look at the personnel bylaws, the clause before, number five, it's for the police chief, deputy chief, and the fire chief and deputy chief, saying that they get the same benefits as the union employees. So, we were just asking for parity. We went two years without an increase. They were getting an increase in longevity, increase in education reimbursement, and I had worked 19 years for the town that time. I worked 29 in July this year. And a person who had been hired only five or 10 years was getting more benefits than I was getting, and I didn't think that was fair. And the selectmen at the time would not listen to us. They wouldn't talk to us. They didn't want to negotiate with the non-union people. We didn't matter to them. So, we had to put a petition article together to do this. And eventually, they agreed with it. And I want to tell you who this is going to affect. It's not just a few people. It's the Director of Public Health, the Secretary to Board of Selectmen, which I am, the Administrative Assistant Confidential Clerk to the Board of Selectmen, the Building Inspector, the Public Access Coordinator, the Council on Aging Director, the COA Outreach Coordinator, the COA Social Daycare Director, the Fire Chief, the Deputy Fire Chief, the Fire Administrative Assistant, the Marine Services Director, the Highway Surveyor, the Library Director, the Town Planner, the Police Chief, the Police Administrative Assistant, the Town Accountant, and Veteran Service Agent. I mean, we just want to be equal. I mean, we do have two more vacation days, but we never asked for that. This was something the Personnel Board made some kind of graph, and we didn't understand. Nobody understands how it works. It's very confusing. All we wanted was to have 25 days, and they gave us 27. Were you going to say no, you know? I would ask that you defeat this article. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any further discussion of the motion under Article 26? You may speak again if you'd like to.
I just have one other comment, that most of the people that she mentioned on her list of non-union employees are contract or salaried employees. All of the union members that we cover are hourly employees. The hourly employees that are listed in there, most of them make more money. And contract employees don't really count because they have contracts as well. So, they go in front of the Selectmen and they negotiate their own contract. And some of those contracts do have actually more than what is in the personnel bylaws. We just want them to be able to go to a... We just want them to be able to go to a venue like this, or go in front of the Board of Selectmen during a meeting and have them actually vote to increase what's in the personnel bylaws. Nothing that has been voted on by town meeting or the Board of Selectmen that's in those personnel bylaws. Once a union contract is signed, it is automatic. Nothing is vetted.
Thank you. Ms. Bouchard?
There are only three positions that I mentioned that have contracts on this list, just three. It's not a bunch, it's just three. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion of the motion under Article twenty-six? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That is defeated. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to recommend that the Board of Selectmen act on the inability of the town treasurer to carry out his duties of office and issue a vote of no confidence against said town treasurer by petition. Does petitioner want to offer some motion?
Chris Wiley, I respectfully ask that we have a vote of no confidence on the town floor.
So...
I'm sorry. I move the town to adopt the provisions of the Article twenty-seven as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee made no recommendation, five yes and four no.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Loes? And just a couple of ground rules for any discussion here. We're going to remember that we're not going to talk about people, we're going to talk about facts. We can talk about offices, perhaps?
Thank you. My name is Jane Loes. I have a question through you, Mr. Moderator, to the Board of Selectmen. I had understood that, that in addition to such a measure as this, they were considering also making the position elected, not, from elected to, to appointed. Has that been accomplished?
That's already been done.
Okay, okay. So, that, that is already done?
Correct.
Okay. And when will that, when will that take into place?
At the expiration of the treasurer's term.
Twenty-twenty. Thank you.
Mr. Brightman?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Brad Brightman, I'd like to make a statement before proceeding.
Well, does it relate to whether we should vote yes or no on this?
Correct.
Okay.
So, this is a story about a turnaround in the treasurer's office. Good evening. Last year, when I came before you in December, the treasurer's office was deeply behind in its work of reconciling, affected by first being short-staffed, then falling behind and being hindered with antiquated processes. The lack of institutional knowledge took its toll and made it extremely difficult and impossible to recover. I believe I had the town fill the position of Assistant Treasurer when first requested, and those resources that were needed at the time utilized, it may never have gone this far. This affected the office and the town. The best way to resolve the matter was to hire a consultant. The town voted to do that, and I thank you for approving. The town did engage a high-profile consultant to assist in the process. The treasurer and staff has embraced the work of the consultant, who has also been engaged to provide training to the office. However, this is a story about a turnaround in the treasurer's office, and we would end up having to spend those resources to get out of our situation. Just like you, I was deeply concerned. Just like you, I want to have the confidence of the residents that everything is safe and secure. Just like you, I am a resident of this town. I grew up in this town. It is important to me to show you that this can turn around and to restore confidence in the office. I take a personal, hands-on approach by rolling up my sleeves to accomplish the mission. Today, I'm proud to say that we are definitely on the right path. Fiscal year two thousand and eighteen accounts were reconciled, and financial statements were completed and filed with the state. The town has completed the audit, and the free cash was certified. Now, we move forward as we reconcile the accounts for this year. The office receives training and to get best practice procedures in place for the future. We are moving things along to complete the work necessary to complete this fiscal year. I am also pleased to report that we recently received an update to credit analysis bond rating for Moody's, and Westport has maintained its AA-three GO and Mig One band rating. This is a story about a turnaround in the treasurer's office. I know that as my term expires, and we go to appointed in April, it is my endeavor to leave the office with a great audit, in good shape, and on a positive note. I keep persevering to that end. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. And, you know, before we do any further discussion on this, I want to remind people that this article has, this motion has no real-world effect. Town mean you can recommend whatever it wants to the Board of Selectmen, but they're under no obligation to do it. I've never heard of a vote of, vote of no confidence within our town, and it has no legal impact. So, with that in mind, let's continue discussion.
Yes. Buzz Brownlee, I think that through Article three, the action we took with, by reducing the treasurer's salary from sixty-eight, nine, seventy-nine to thirty thousand, I think we've made the point quite well. I don't think we need to do more.
Thank you. Anything further? Ma'am?
Lady Correa for Donna Street, well, after the bombshell on question three, you're going to need a vote of no confidence to back up the town, because he's not going to let that rest. He's going to turn around the office.
Please, no, no. We are not going to talk about other people. We're not going to pretend that we know what they're going to do, what they think, anything like that. Please tell us your opinion. Tell us what you think.
Okay. We're at a quarter of a million dollars to support one department out of fifty-seven departments in this town. So, I'm just saying, I'm trying to keep the ball in the court. This brings it on. The consultant, we're, we are paying, we are putting aside another seventy-five thousand dollars for the next year, so that, because we cannot trust the department to run up by itself. We have to, the, the Board of Selectmen and FinCom have put aside seventy-five thousand dollars, so we don't end up in the same position we end up in last December. You've got two boards, two top boards in town doing that. So, yeah, I think the vote of no confidence is more than necessary, and I want to see my, our Board of Selectmen vote on this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further? So, we'll now proceed to a vote on the motion under Article twenty-seven. All those in favor of adopting the provisions of Article twenty-seven as printed in the warrant will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Will those in favor please raise their hands? Those opposed? May I have the tellers volunteer to count? Hang on, we need to reorganize, because there are only, there are only four. and keep your hand raised until you get a clear signal from the teller that your vote's been counted. your hand. Keep your hand raised until you get a clear signal from the teller that your vote's been counted. Tell us forty-one yes, seventy-three no. It is defeated. Article twenty-eight, sees the town will vote to appropriate the sum of seven hundred and forty-five thousand for the cost of the capital expenditure items listed in the warrant under Article twenty-eight as described in the warrant sponsored by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Have a motion, Mr. Carrera?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to appropriate the sum of seven hundred and forty-five thousand for free cash for the cost of capital expenditure items listed in the warrant under Article twenty-eight, in accordance with the town's fiscal year two thousand and twenty capital improvement planning program, including the cost of undertaking the projects and/or purchasing and equipping items as specified, as well as all incidental and related costs, with each item being considered a separate appropriation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommended in favor unanimously nine to zero with funding source for free cash.
Thank you. So, once again, a multiple-line item article. So, if you would agree with the line item, please remain silent. If you'd like to discuss it or vote against it, please say hold loud enough for me to hear. Voting machines, forty thousand dollars from free cash. Mackumber school replacement of the intercom slash master clock, seventy-five thousand dollars free cash. School entryways, forty thousand dollars free cash. I'm sorry, did someone say hold? Thank you. Police Department cruiser replacement, three, hundred and forty-five thousand dollars free cash. Westport Elementary School roof replacement feasibility study, one hundred thousand dollars free cash. Highway Department heavy truck, one hundred and fifty thousand free cash. Mackumber school remove asbestos floor tiles, eighty thousand dollars free cash. Senior Center elevator renovation, sixty thousand free cash. Yes?
Stabilization.
And the motion is free cash.
Okay, so the...
The article asks a question, a motion proposes an answer. The proposed answer is free cash for all of these.
Yeah, no problem.
But I thought that the warrant, you know, is the actual...
The warrant asks a question, the motion proposes an answer. The answer proposed by the Chair of the Board of the Finance Committee was free cash for all of these. And I'm sorry, where were we? I'm going to go back to, I think we already did this, but we'll do it again. Senior Center elevator renovation, sixty thousand free cash. Town Hall Annex major rehab feasibility study, twenty-five thousand free cash. Westport Elementary School enlarge the parking lot, thirty thousand free cash. So, we will now proceed to a vote on all items except school entryways and Westport Elementary School roof replacement feasibility study. So, all those in favor of a line item that do not have a hold will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those are carried unanimously. Would someone like to speak to school entryways at forty thousand dollars? Ms. Herr?
Yes, Linda Herr. Just clarification through, Mr. Moderator, through you to the capital improvement. When it says school entryways, what exactly are you proposing to undertake with that?
Is there, Mr. King, can you answer that for us?
I'm, I'm just asking, what...
So, is there, is there, is there representative of the capital improvement? Oh, thank you.
Hi, Tony Vares, School Committee Member of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. So, the, the entryways, the forty-five thousand for school entryways is for upgrades to our security systems that we currently have to...
Can you speak directly into the microphone, please? Thanks.
Some upgrades to our security systems that we have, and to put in some windows in the vestibules, so that, so that the staff has a better view of people coming in and out of the schools.
Thank you. Anything further? No?
No.
Any further discussion of the forty thousand dollars for school entryways? Then we'll proceed to a vote on that line item. All those in favor will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. So, we move to Westport Elementary School roof replacement feasibility study, one hundred thousand for free cash.
I'm just trying to understand why it's going to cost a hundred thousand dollars for a feasibility study to replace a roof? I mean, I, I think for roof replacement, it would, a hundred thousand dollars would be better spent replacing it.
So, is there someone who can speak to that, sir?
So, the, the Elementary School Replacement Project would be another MSBA project, so...
Can you speak directly into the microphone, please?
Yeah, this would be another MSBA Math School Building Authority project that we would, that we applied for. So, there's a very stringent process that's involved with these processes, with, with these grants, and it's, so it's a reimburse, we, the district, the town would be reimbursed at roughly about forty-seven percent of the money for this project. So, you have to, we have to do this feasibility study. And the hundred is, is an estimate. It could be, we're hoping it would certainly be less. But it's the number that they recommended we, we asked for.
Thank you. Any further discussion of the hundred thousand dollars for Westport Elementary School roof replacement, roof replacement feasibility study from free cash? Seeing none, all those in favor of that line item will please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, that is carried. Thank you for correcting me. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of forty thousand dollars to be used by the Board of Assessors to fund fees and expenses to update the revaluation program as described in the article sponsored by the Board of Assessors. Mr. Carrera, will you offer some motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town adopt the provisions of Article thirty-two with forty thousand dollars for free cash.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, recommended in favor unanimously, nine, nine to zero with funding for free cash.
Thank you. Any discussion? Would you like to speak? Would you like to speak?
Veronica Bullier, through you, Ms. Moderator. My warrant says we're on Article twenty-nine, and we just made a motion to move Article thirty-two.
Did you say Article... Thank you very much, I appreciate that. There was some renumbering of articles, and I went over this slide presentation twenty times, but I missed that. So, may I ask Mr. Carrera if you would make a motion to adopt the provisions of Article twenty-nine with forty thousand dollars for free cash?
I move the town adopt the provisions of Article twenty-nine with forty thousand dollars for free cash.
And thank you, Ms. Bullier. There's a second. So, Finance Committee recommendation is the same with it as twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, good, thanks. Any further discussion of the motion under Article twenty-nine? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to pay for the groundwater remediation done at the head landing, including all incidental related costs, or taking their action rather than their two, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrera, will you offer some motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town appropriate ten thousand dollars for free cash to pay for groundwater remediation at the head landing, including all incidental and related costs.
Thank you. Is there a second? Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends in favor six yes, one abstention, not to exceed ten thousand dollars with funding from free cash.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bull?
Jeff Bull, member of the Landing Commission. I am wondering, given that the remediation is not complete, and the unlikely that we will need all twenty-five thousand, but does the Finance Committee have additional information, since the remediation has not been completed, why it's limiting this to ten thousand dollars?
So, your question is, why is, why is the Finance Committee suggested ten thousand rather than twenty-five, given that the remediation is incomplete?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
I defer that to one of the Finance Committee members, Tom.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Moderator, my name is Tom Schmidt. I'm president of the Westport River Watershed Alliance. The ten thousand dollars is not to exceed price. We have incurred costs of approximately fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars, I believe the town administrator has the exact number. The arrangement we've worked with the town on is that we would split that cost fifty-fifty at this point for this year's appropriation. That works out as somewhere under ten thousand dollars, so that's the reason for the not to exceed price. In response to the previous speaker's question, if there are further expenses, remediation expenses, that might be a warrant article for a future town meeting.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Bull? Did that answer your question adequately?
No, just so that I understand, then, this money is only to be spent on expenses currently incurred. So, if there are expenses which are incurred two days from now, who's gonna pay those?
So, your question is, is this only for essentially bills that we already have? And you're wondering, well, and the question about what we're gonna, how we're gonna pay for things going forward is not germane to this particular question. So, is this for only bills that have already...
These are, this is reimbursement for expenses already incurred.
So, if there's more expenses incurred, since the work isn't done, it's not clear to me...
How will those be paid for?
Exactly.
Okay, so how will further expenses be handled if they arise?
And Mr. Moderator, we would expect them to be paid in accordance with the arrangement we've made with the Board of Selectmen at a future town meeting. It would be a similar article up to a maximum amount. It would be a similar article that we're acting on right now, but it would be based on expenses incurred between now and the next town meeting.
So, it would be coming before town meeting to, to, at another time. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bull, anything, did that answer that question for you?
It does. The Landing Commission is anticipating some additional expenses about groundwater remediation in the next year, with the intent of saving the town many thousands of dollars over the next decade. And I guess we'll fund those out of our own, whatever money we get. Thank you.
Thanks. Any further discussion of the motion under Article thirty? Seeing none, all those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds and/or borrow a sum of two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding that drainage remediation work determined by a plan for the Westport Middle High School as described in the article, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Carrera, will you offer some motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town adopt the provisions of Article thirty-one for two hundred thousand dollars for free cash.
Thank you. Someone had asked to make a presentation on this. Do you, is that person in the hall still want to? Excuse me, I need the FinCom recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends in favor seven to zero, not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars with funding for free cash.
Thank you. Please.
Warrant thirty-one for the funding drainage improvements and...
Will you please speak directly into the microphone?
I'm sorry. To resolve the flooding of our property and neighboring properties. The Westport Elementary School's stormwater system was constructed to drain stormwater runoff from the school building, associated parking areas, and playing fields through three drainage pipes toward abutting properties at the east of the property. The town is the owner of the stormwater system installed at the elementary school, and our property is located to the east and down gradient from the elementary school. Two of the pipes flow onto our property, one pipe flows onto Wade's property, which is to the north of us. During every rainstorm, the stormwater runoff from the system floods our property, and it also deposits grit and debris onto the property, as well as uproots trees. Stormwater discharges from the elementary school and inundates our property. This is just some pictures of what's going on there. As you can see, a lot of the roots are showing up. Dirt's getting washed away, everything's falling down. This is the water coming from the pipes up top. Special town meeting, town voted to appropriate monies to fund engineering study of the stormwater runoff from the elementary school to resolve the flooding on our property and adjoining properties. The engineering firm has proposed a drainage improvements plan that is expected to correct the flooding. The proposed drainage improvements include the installation of subsurface stormwater infiltration systems that have been designed to retain and infiltrate runoff generated by a two-year storm. This is a copy of the plan that they are proposing. The subsurface units here, they have riprap at the end to any overflow that comes out over the two-year storm event. The Select Board sponsored this article to appropriate the necessary monies to fund the drainage improvements.
Further discussion, sir?
Yes, I would like to, I've reviewed the plans. I review plans every day for a living of proposals by civil engineers, so I have a pretty good idea what's going on with these plans. First of all, they aren't the best plans I've ever seen, but it's not neither here nor there. I would propose that there is an amendment to the article to direct the majority of that money to cover the cost of revised plans that are then reviewed by other unassociated engineers to this particular company to see if this system would work based on what I know about drainage and stormwater from a professional point of view. These plans aren't gonna even remotely address all of the runoff from the, up on the middle school and parking lot areas that are being proposed, excuse me, which are gonna create even more runoff. And it will take, it will certainly address the water coming off that property, but it doesn't address where that water will end up. I am the recipient of the end product of a lot of that water goes through my land. And since they've done the work already up by the middle school, my fields are underwater almost all the time. What was once a drainage swale is now a full-fledged running brook, again, because nobody planned what's gonna happen at the end of that. And these plans don't address that. So, I would like to see that a large portion of that money addressed to revising those plans, to address the water, not only from where it's going to be collected from, but all the way, how it's going to be, where it ends up and how it gets there. So, I'm making a motion to that effect.
I'm sorry, but I actually can't accept that, because the warrant article proposes that... That the town appropriate two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding that drainage remediation work determined by a plan, by the specific plan. So, the warrant article actually references the specific plan. And so, we are voting either to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to do the remediation work described in that plan, or not doing that. But we can't, we can't, we can't direct that money to another plan.
You can't count the plan as part of that remediation project? In other words...
The plan defines the remediation work. It's the remediation work defined by that plan.
Right. I understand that.
So, no, I cannot accept an amendment to direct the money to another plan. That would be outside the scope of the article.
Wouldn't be to another plan, it would be to better define or revise the current plan. That current plan is part of that current project.
That would be outside the scope of the, of the article.
Okay, that's all right. I'm gonna talk on the next one, so I'm standing here. But, okay, that's, it is what it is.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, that is, that is simply outside the scope of the article.
Sure, sure.
So, I can't, I can't get it. So, anything further?
No.
Ma'am?
I would like to amend this article to delete the words after town clerk comma, the provided that such funds may be expended only in the event that the work is not included in the project budget for construction of the middle, of the high school, middle school, and or take any other action there too, because by leaving it in there, by leaving it in there as it is, it gives a false impression to the taxpayers of Westport what the project is actually costing.
So, you are proposing to strike everything past the word clerk?
Yes. It should be town clerk period, and take out provided, and then to the end.
And then strike the remaining language. Is that clear to everyone? Does anyone need clarification of what she's proposing as an amendment? It would be striking the last three words of the third of the last line, and then the last two lines. Is there a second for that amendment? There is no second, so we will not proceed with that. Mr. Vera?
Mr. Moderator, I rise in support of this article. Right in the future, there was some previous folks that spoke on this issue a little bit, that talked about some responsibilities going forward with the new school. The project that we're talking about is really holding the town somewhat responsible neighbors that live in that area that have been flooded through a construction of the elementary schools some years ago. The Lord requires any new construction to take care of stormwater and not have that added to the problem going forward. But it doesn't address what's going on now, and has been going on for some time. There's a number of families that are affected by that and their properties. Both sides of Gifford Road, by the way, just not the land that abuts the property, but Gifford Road itself is being undermined. And the other side of Gifford Road, as the previous speaker spoke of, is being affected by it. So, all we're trying to do is empower the town to set some money aside to address this problem. Any private property owner would be responsible if stormwater was entering other property. The town should take that leadership and do the same thing. And if they're trying to enforce the bylaw, it's something that we should be doing as a town, and it's something that the neighbors should not have to put up with. It's been discussed by many boards, by many committees over the last year, and we still haven't got it resolved. And this has gone on for many, many years. And there are other neighbors that live in that area that might want to speak to it. But I would hope that the people that are left in town meetings still would feel passionate about this article. It's a fair thing to do, and we should be doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alden?
I was trying to get your attention before, Mr. Alden, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Valcorden?
I would like to call the question.
Okay, so, we have a motion to call the question. So, if you would like to hear further discussion, you would vote no. If you have heard enough discussion and would like to proceed to vote on Article thirty-two, please vote yes. So, all those in favor calling the question and proceeding to vote on Article thirty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. So, we now proceed to a vote on the motion under Article thirty-two. All those in favor of the motion under Article thirty-two will please say aye.
Aye.
I apologize. Article thirty-one. So, all those in favor of the motion under Article thirty-one will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is carried. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire interest in land that may be necessary to address stormwater from the Westport Elementary School as described in the article sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Shufel?
I move the town adopt the provisions of Article thirty-two as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Finance Committee recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee makes no recommendation unanimously, seven to zero.
Thanks. Sir?
Yeah, essentially, this article is saying that the town citizens are giving permission to the Selectmen to acquire the use of, or actually acquire, some land somewhere for some amount of money possibly. I understand that there is going to be, need to be land or land use acquisition for this project, the same project essentially that the previous article was talking about. There's definitely a need for some work there, and it's gonna require some easements or something to allow some sort of remediation of that section of Gifford Road, which is getting flooded all the time. And will get even more flooded when we make more land impervious up the hill, because it comes down in that direction essentially. It affects a lot of neighbors. I would just move that we defeat this article until it is better defined what land we're giving the Selectmen to take by eminent domain, because once they take it by eminent domain, there are a lot of rights that are given up that are generally guaranteed. But, you know, you're kinda stuck. If a town, if the town versus a single family based on, you know, their desire to take your property for something that could be negotiated, but there's no guarantee it will be negotiated. It's just that we're giving, as I said, the Selectmen, and I trust the Selectmen to do the, you know, the best for their citizens, but we're essentially just saying, yes, go ahead, take some land somewhere from somebody for a project, which we don't know, even know how much land, we're not, we don't know what is going to be the easement. Is it gonna be an underground pipe? Is it gonna be a brook? We don't know. I would suggest that we defeat this article and replace it at another town meeting with better definition of what they're asking for here.
Thank you.
So, my motion is that we defeat this article.
Okay, well, that wouldn't actually be a motion, but that is your suggestion. Sir?
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, okay. I would suggest... Oh, yeah, okay, I, I would, uh, suggest that we amend it to take out eminent domain.
Pardon? That, you would like to propose an amendment?
To, to, the amendment to take out a- any reference to eminent domain.
So you are proposing an amendment that we strike the words "or eminent domain"?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second? So we have a motion and a second, so now, discussion on the motion to strike the words "or eminent domain".
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, would you like to?
Oh, yeah, the, the, my suggestion is that we re-look at this particular article and, and where, where I would not be object to eminent domain. Where the article is better defined as to what we're talking about.
But now we're talking about the amendment. You just proposed an amendment...
Right, 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 right.
To strike the words eminent domain, so please speak to why we should or should not vote for that amendment.
That's what I'm doing. I, I'm, I am, I am suggesting that... Uh, first, I gave, already gave my reasons for why I, I want to strike the eminent domain. I'm now suggesting to back, to give some more backing to my suggest, uh, my motion, that the, the, uh, the article better define what the pro...
That's not, that's not about the, the amendment. We're talking about the amendment right now. So I think you're right that you have already stated your case about the amendment.
I'd like to make a motion to strike some language?
Yes.
On the amendment to strike the language. Sir?
Uh, I'd like to take out, um, acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain?
No, right, right now, right now, we are discussing an amendment that proposes to strike the language eminent domain. So please speak to whether we should or should not amend our motion that way. Nothing? Sir?
I don't think that we can restrict the Selectmen to taking by eminent domain. I think that's the law. I'm not sure, but anyway, uh, is a motion to pass over this article in order now, or are we just not yet?
No.
All right, then, I'll read.
So anyone else want to speak on the amendment? Mr. Vera?
Mr. Moderator, I'd ask the previous speaker to consider, uh, withdrawing his motion so we could vote down this article. I, I think we need to empower the Selectmen to enter negotiations, but I don't think what he was attempting...
Please just, please just talk about the amendment. Please just talk about the amendment. Let's discharge the amendment, and then we can vote the article up or down.
I think the reason he submitted this was to put some control over it. I think the best control is to withdraw the motion and vote the article down.
Okay, we're not going to withdraw the amendment. It's already before us. We'll vote it up or down. But if we're done discussing it, we can move on to that. So any further discussion on the amendment? So now, we'll take a vote on the amendment. A yes vote would have us striking the language "or eminent domain" from the text of Article 32. All those in favor of striking that language will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Those in favor will please raise their hands? Those opposed will please raise their, raise their hands? That is defeated. So, we return to Article 32 as written in the warrant. Further discussion on that? And I believe, sir, that, that is what you were waiting for, is to discuss Article 32?
Yes.
The, the gentleman back, at the back microphone, yes?
Uh, I wanted to make a motion to strike language, um, eminent domain is out of there already, but...
No, it isn't.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
That motion was just defeated.
You're right, you're right, yes. To, to strike acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain, and also strike collection and treatment of disposal, and replace acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain by acquire by easement or agreement.
Okay, once again, please. You're going to strike what language?
Acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain, and replace it with acquire by easement or agreement.
Okay.
And strike collection and treatment and disposal.
Collection. So you're leaving conveyance, though?
Pardon?
Says collection, conveyance, treatment, and disposal. You're going to leave conveyance, strike collection, treatment, and disposal?
I'll leave conveyance, just collection, treatment, and disposal.
Okay, is there a second? There is no second, so we will... Okay, so we do have a second. Discussion on this amendment. Seeing none, we will now vote. A yes vote means that you would like to strike from the language "acquire by gift purchase or eminent domain", and replace it with "by easement or agreement", and that you would strike, um, collection, treatment, and disposal from the fourth line of Article 32. All those in favor of that amendment will please raise their hands? Those opposed? That is defeated. So we are back to the unamended text of Article 32. Ma'am?
Call the question.
So, I think we probably understand this by now. A yes vote now means that you, um, have heard all the discussion you would like to under Article 32. A no vote means you would need more information to make a good decision. So all those in favor of calling the question and stopping discussion of Article 32 will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
That, that is carried by a clear two-thirds majority. So we now proceed to a vote on the motion under Article 32.
Can we bring up, can we bring it back to discussion?
No, no. Now, we just, the meeting just voted to end discussion. So, we're now going to proceed to a vote on Article 32. All those in favor of the motion under Article 32 will please raise their hands? Those opposed? Please keep your hands up. Those in favor, please? That is carried.
Which way did it go?
To adjourn?
Which way did it go?
It passed. May I now have a motion to dissolve Westport's annual town meeting? Any discussion? All those in favor will please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you and good night. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your endurance.